Call to order the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, July 17th at 8:00 AM. We're going to start this meeting with opening ceremonies and exercises. invocation Commissioner Hundley.
Good morning. So, this is adapted from the words of an Arizona State Representative named Juan Mendez. I would like to ask you to take a look around the room at all of the men and women here today, sharing together this extraordinary experience in this place, in this time, of dedicating ourselves to improving the lives of the people of our community. I'm sure I speak for all of the board members when I say what an honor it is that we should be allowed to be here in these chairs. This room, in which there are many challenges, debates, many moments of tension, of ideological division, of frustration, is also a room where we have much more in common than we have differences. We share the same spectrum of potential for care, for compassion, for fear, for joy, for love. In this room, let us cherish and celebrate our shared humanity, our shared capacity for reason and compassion, our shared love for the people of our county, and let us root our policymaking process in the values that are relevant to all of our neighbors regardless of religious belief or non-belief. In gratitude and in love, in reason and in compassion, let's work together for a better Grand Traverse County.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you have the roll call, please.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
LaPointe?
Present.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yep.
Kofia?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Henchel?
Here. Okay, all are present. Next is the approval of the minutes of July 3rd, 2019, regular meeting, page three in your packet. Does anyone have any issues with the minutes? Or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
Moved by Klaus, supported by Kofia. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are on first public comment. Would you please read the rules?
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provisions of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Public comment shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. Any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. No person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions, if any. The Chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. The Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, allow an additional opportunity or time to speak if determined germane and necessary to the discussion. Public comment will be solicited during the two public comment periods noted in Rule 5.4, Order of Business. However, public comment may be received during the meeting when a specific agenda topic is scheduled for discussion by the Board. Prior to the first public comment, the Chairperson will indicate the topics on the agenda for which public comment will be accepted. Members of the public wishing to comment should raise their hand or pass a note to the clerk in order to be recognized and shall not address the Board until called upon by the Chairperson. Please be respectful and refrain from personal or political attacks.
Okay. Anyone like to address the Board? This is your opportunity. There'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting, but this will be the only opportunity before the meeting commences. So, step right up to the podium if you'd like to speak. Start with your name and where you're from.
Hi, I'm Rick Brown, 234 Fairlane Drive, Traverse City. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, I wanted to express my support for Commissioner Kofia's efforts to update and improve the county's harassment policies, as well as requiring board members to participate in going through the training. Secondly, I wanted to echo the concerns that were raised in the Record Eagle over the weekend about the need for septic tank inspections in the county. They're truly a hidden danger to our environment, our public health, and our economy, in the immortal words of Ross, the late Ross Perot. If we start having septic tanks leak into our lakes, you'll have a giant sucking sound of people not coming here, tourists leaving the area, and home prices and property values dropping like a rock. So, we don't want to have that happen to our community. We've been blessed with a gorgeous place to live, and let's treat it with respect that it deserves. We are stewards, not owners, of the community, and I think it's important to, at very least, start a point-of-sale septic tank inspection. That's a very small amount of any home purchase cost. I think I did the math in my head last night, and I apologize. This is before going to bed, so it might be off, but if, let's say it's $500 for a septic tank inspection on a $200,000 home, that would be .025 percent. So, it would be a very small amount, and the short-term investment would yield long-term gains in terms of protection of our environment, protection of our public health, and protection of our economy. Thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Anybody else? Jump right up there. Don't be shy.
Good morning.
Good morning. Matt Check, Ninth Street, Traverse City. Good morning, everyone. As a former member of the Traverse City Human Rights Commission, charges of racism, bigotry have always been of very deep interest to me, and my topic today will be mostly about maybe false charges that I've seen, fake charges of racism. One of those happened to be a woman that we've all heard her name, at least we've heard her song. It was Kate Smith, singer of "God Bless America." And the terrible charges against her stem from Smith having performed two controversial songs, at least one of which possessed racist overtones and content, early in her career. The first of these was a song that is "That's Why Darkies Were Born," which certainly sounds aggressively racist. The lyrics, though, are not so clear-cut. The song is part lament. Quote, "Brothers, sisters, what must be, what must be. Though the balance is wrong, still our faith may be strong." And then it points out that the unjustly enslaved are heroes for having courageous perseverance in the face of unthinkable evil perpetrated upon them. Someone had, quote, "Someone had to fight the old devil, shout about Gabriel's horn, someone had to stroke that old train that would bring God's children to green pastures. That's why darkies were born." Those were the songs that Kate Smith sang. The only thing is, is that song was composed by Paul Robison, a black singer himself and composer. It is also worth noting that the song was recorded by Mr. Robison. And the other controversial song performed by Smith was "Pikin' Innes in Heaven," from the one Hollywood film in which she starred in 1933, "Hello, Everybody." Richard Hayes, Smith's biographer, rightly called it an offensive novelty. Did Kate Smith mean to be offensive? We can't ask her now, but we know her opinion about racism in general. Smith addressed the issue of racism in 1945 on her CBS show, "We the People." On that show, she said, "Race, hatred, social prejudice, religious bigotry, they are the diseases that eat away the fibers of peace. Unless they are exterminated, it is inevitable that we will have another war." And where are they going to be exterminated? At the conference table in Geneva, she asked? Not by a long shot, she continued, in your own city, your church, your children's school, perhaps your own home. And she continued, exhorting her vast listening audience, quote, "You and I must do it. Every father, mother in the world, every teacher, everyone who can rightly call himself a human being." Obviously, these are not the words of a racist. Instead, they are the words of someone who had come to understand that racism is an evil that opposes America.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Anybody else this morning?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I can really get used to these eight o'clock in the morning Commission meetings. It feels pretty good. Just real quick, I want to just mention that I appreciate the communication and the cooperation that's going around regarding the Maple Bay House property and the possibility to still use that for fire service training here locally. I know that there's been a few emails that you received from some fire service-based parties. I sent you a letter yesterday. Hopefully, you had a chance to read it, just understanding that that will be a valuable resource for us, but also that there's more work to do in that area, and it's not a given that we could use that possibly for free, because we have to be respectful with the county's tax dollars and how we do that. So, we're looking forward to working with you on that project and then exploring some possibilities, and hopefully, we'll have a little bit of time to get that done before the snow gets like that deep. So, I appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else this morning? Okay, I don't see anybody moving. We'll move on. Approval of the agenda? Have I been presented the agenda? Is there any requests or motions?
So moved. Support.
Moved by LaPointe, supported by Jewitt, to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have an agenda. Consent calendar, would please read that.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one Commission motion without discussion. Any member of the Commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single Commission action adopting the consent calendar. A, receive. Number one, Grand Traverse Community Collaborative Minutes of June 27th. Number two, Northwest Michigan Community Action Agency Minutes of May 16th. Number three, Grand Traverse Conservation District, June 2019 Report. Number four, Grand Traverse County Road Commission Monthly Report. Number five, Northern Michigan Regional Entity Substance Use Disorder Oversight Meeting Minutes of May 6th. Number six, Expenditures Greater Than $5,000 Report, June 8th through July 8th. B, approvals. Number one, 2019 Holler Licenses. Number two, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Amendments. Number three, June 2019 Claims Approval. Number four, Child and Adolescent Health Center Mental Health Expansion Funding Agreement, Kingsley Middle School, and Traverse City West High School. Number five, Additional Policy Updates.
Okay. Are there any items the Board would like removed? Commissioner LaPointe?
Yes, B4 and B5, please.
Anybody else? Any members of the public like anything removed for discussion? Seeing none? Okay. So, do we entertain a motion to approve the exceptions of B4 and B5?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent calendar with the exceptions of B4 and B5.
Support.
Moved by Wheelack, supported by Jewitt. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes. Motion carries? All right. We have no special orders of business. We're on items removed from the consent calendar. We'll start with item B4, the Child and Adolescent Care Center Mental Health Expansion Funding, page 60 in your packet. Commissioner LaPointe, do you have a question for staff?
Yes, I did read through this, and what it is, is it's a grant amount of $200,000 in support of mental health care for high school students, and I went through this, and I was quite honestly amazed at the statistics in there. It was, and I have a question on that. In going through, and you highlighted it under the, under number four, purpose, and I was kind of surprised at this. The purpose of this agreement is to provide funds to the contractor to enable them to provide outreach services to Medicaid-eligible children, adolescent, and families. Does that mean that these two individuals can only deal with children who are Medicaid-eligible?
It doesn't exclude all children. It essentially means that's where the money is targeted, but the point is for the positions to be placed in schools that have a higher percentage of children who are eligible for the reduced lunch. I just want to, I'm Wendy Hershford with the Health Department, and this is Andrew Waite. He's our Adolescent Health and Youth Clinic Supervisors, and so he's the one who actually pulled up all the statistics, so I might let him address some of your questions, but I wanted to introduce him.
The grant is going to have Medicaid matching funds, so they have to put in there that the purpose of some of that money is for, to target Medicaid and underserved populations, but we can, just similar to our current grants for the adolescent clinic, see any child between ages of 10 and 22 for services. No one's turned away worth the money.
Okay, because I thought it just would be awkward if an individual was there and said, "No, I can't talk to you." Now, they're going to be housed in two locations, one in Kingsley and one in one of the other high schools. Are they going to just service just those schools?
Yes. So, the part of the funding is required that they have to be in one building. So, any other person in the districts or the school building is okay. They can have other students come into that school, but that provider has to be full-time on-site at the location.
And then we will still have, we have a half-time position in behavioral health at our two existing adolescent clinics, so one's in downtown Kingsley and one's on the TBA ISD campus. So, we'll have essentially four entry points for students who need services. And this is a huge and much-needed kind of boost of funding for mental health in the schools.
Thank you. I just had the, the thing that struck me was, like I said, the percentages alarming, to say the least, and then the Medicaid focus. I thought that, I couldn't see how that would, could be implemented, to be honest with you.
That's fairly typical for public health, though.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or a motion to approve?
Can I just, so it's out on the record in case, for people who haven't plowed through the packet, the statistics that Commissioner LaPointe's talking about, was that the survey of high school kids in our county, and stop me when I'm wrong, but the survey of high school kids in our county indicated that basically, one in four, I think 26% of high school kids in Grand Traverse County had considered suicide within the last 12 months, and that 11% of them had taken an action toward that severe enough that it required medical attention. Is that, which is staggering.
The 11% is?
Maybe I was reading that.
They took a serious attempt?
Right.
And I believe it's around 3.5% that actually needed medical care.
Okay.
But the numbers are still staggering.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll just chime in, since we're, I appreciate it. Coming off the consent calendar, I have tracked public education funding in our state over a long period of time, about a decade or more, and TCAPS does get some of the lowest per pupil funding still, I believe, and my understanding, and I did used to work in the schools and I saw this happen, that because of the continued sort of cuts in funding over the last decade, that we've had social workers get spread out over multiple buildings and have caseloads of hundreds of children across the district. Is that, you understand? This feels like it's sort of helping supplement the fact that we have been underfunding as a state our mental health services in our school district. So, you don't have to verify that, but I just want to go on the record as saying, I think that's.
We have some of it from TCAPS here.
Part of the reason, yeah, is that we've been cutting school nurses and social workers and spreading them out further and further across an already rural district, and unfortunately, the kids are paying the price. So, I'm glad this grant is happening, but.
It's up to you if you want to say anything or not.
Good morning. Start with your name.
I'm Joe Asperm, the principal at West Senior High, which would be one of the two schools that would receive the support. Yes, obviously, school funding has been pretty stagnant in Michigan, so that impacts TCAPS, Kingsley, many of the schools in the region, and I think what you do find is, what gets met first is the academic needs, the teachers in the classrooms, kind of the bare-bones things you need to run the schools. We find more and more that if we're not meeting those non-academic needs of students, the academic efforts are hampered, you know? And this is a statewide issue everywhere, and they're looking for these types of partnerships that we're working on with the county. The Traverse City hosts the State Principals Conference, which happens in June, so there's principals from hundreds of middle schools and high schools in the state, and they set the priorities for the year. And one of the three priorities in the state of Michigan, for the entire state for all schools, is student mental health. So, that kind of gives you the idea of kind of the state of mental health across Michigan, and certainly in northern Michigan, and it's one of the top three priorities, which it never has been before. Those have always been academic issues, college entrance exams and things like that, and student mental health is in the top three now.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Or motion to approve?
Move we approve the, what are the?
Funding?
Funding, thank you. The funding agreement.
B4.
Moved by Commissioner Hundley. We have a second.
Support.
Seconded by Commissioner Kofia. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on item B5 from the consent calendar, Additional Policy Updates, page 71 in the packet. And Commissioner LaPointe?
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Page 78. First of all, you're, I read through your changes. I assume yellow was addition and red was deletion?
No. Actually, the yellow was additions that Commissioner Kofia and I worked on, and then the red was actually, we sent it then to Kit for his review as well, and his was in red. So, I wanted to keep them separate so that you knew that yellow was us and red was Kit.
But those were his additions.
His additions, yes. It's the only reason why they're in two colors.
Okay, then I have no questions.
Okay.
In reading this, I thought yellow, I just assumed, there I went.
Yeah, that was just Kit helping herself.
And that yellow was add and red was, it actually kind of reads fine, with one exception.
Okay.
I have no further questions.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
The highlighted part here on page 75, I mean, are these policies employee policies or elected official policies?
They're, it's a great question, Brad. They are employee policies, but because you guys are also employees of the county and elected officials, they, we wanted to make sure that the anti-harassment policy covered everything, which I think it does now.
Similar to what we're currently working on with the ethics policy, be more explicit.
Commissioner Wheelack?
I have no problem with the policies, but I do feel compelled to, you know, mention the fact that even though we have the policy, we have no way of disciplining elected officials. That cannot be done by this Board, it cannot be done by the administration or the HR Department. The only person who truly could discipline elected officials, whether it be Commissioners or Judges or the Sheriff, is the Governor.
Yes, that is correct.
Or the prosecutors.
Or the voters. Or the voters, which is why some of these pieces are built in for more transparency and accountability if there's a substantiated complaint against one of those.
Any more questions or comments? A motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Moved by LaPointe?
Support.
Seconded by Kofia. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good job, and thank you for your hard work. Appreciate it. All right, we're on department items, Administration and Finance. Item A1, amended fund balance policy, page 91 in the packet.
Good morning, Commissioners. You have for you an amended policy for fund balance, moving it from the current 15% to 25%. I have a brief discussion about why we decided to present this to you in the fashion that we did. I wanted to give you a little bit of history. In May of 18, we presented to the Board. Due to several positive trends in our financial circumstances, we presented to the Board five different options. We've made some pretty good movement on these options. One was to pay down the pension obligation, two was the OPEB obligation, three was to address the costs associated with the jail, four was to invest in employees, and five was to amend the fund balance policy. The Board gave us guidance, and we've been making tracks on those since May of 18. The amendment to the fund balance policy is coming to you today, still as kind of a tail end of that discussion back in May of 18. We have made significant strides on our fund balance, I'm sorry, on our pension obligation. As you know, we recently moved that payment to $7 million for 2020. We have an actuarially determined payment that we have to make, and we make well in excess of that payment to MERS on an annual basis, which is a very good and responsible thing to do. The OPEB obligation has been addressed. We're making payments on the OPEB obligation as described. This Board has instructed staff to create a Correctional Infrastructure Committee as a result of our goal-setting session. We are in play on that. Last year, we gave the employees a 3% wage increase. That wage increase has not been seen in over a decade. We've also enhanced wellness opportunities and employee recognition opportunities, so we've invested in our employees, and the last remaining thing is the amendment to the fund balance policy. We considered several factors before coming up with a percentage. Gatsby recommends a two-month fund balance, something that equals, right now, if I have that correctly, if I put that to you, about 16.7% of our current operating funds. So, we are below that with our current policy, of 15%. We have $14 million in fund balance, we have $11 million roughly in unassigned. So, a 25% fund balance would mean we hold on to $9.75 million. That is just about three months as compared to our operating expenses. We feel that that is a very responsible and conservative approach to the fund balance. We considered cash flow. Mr. Bott can jump in at any time, but our, the lion's share of our revenue, the 25 million in taxable value, does not come in until the second half of the year. We considered budget flexibility. The budget is not science. We budget anticipated revenues and anticipated expenditures, and sometimes we hit the marks and sometimes we don't. On the expenses side of things, elected officials and department heads are very good at managing their budgets, but they don't have the same amount of control with the revenue side. So, sometimes revenue is impacted adversely without any necessary control by our department heads or elected officials. A healthy fund balance would allow us to make midstream adjustments to those occurrences. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to hop in and ask. The third thing we considered is our impact on the bond rating. There are many things that affect the bond rating. In 2018, we were given a AA+ bond rating on some funds that the Road Commission was asking for, and Standard and Poor's assigned that bond rating to us, and they also affirmed our AA bond rating for our existing bonds. Part of that is our budget flexibility, our strong financial management, a strong budgetary performance, but also our fund balance and the ability to address things as they come. In fairness, we didn't get a higher bond rating because, in part, of our pension obligation. They said that we didn't really have a plan in place in 2016, 17, to address the pension obligation, and it was a large obligation as compared to our overall budget. That has changed. We have a plan, we have an amortization agreement, and this Board has taken steps to be very aggressive towards the pension obligation. So, we have a very strong bond rating for a lot of reasons, one of which is the fund All of the bond discussion, I have the Standard and Poor's rating, if you wish to see it, but all of that discussion lends down to the downside and the upside of that rating. And the downside, I can read from the bond rating document, "We could lower the rating of the county's budgetary performance significantly, weakened due to pressures from increasing pension costs, and reserves drop significantly from a very strong level to a level no longer commensurate with our peers." That's the downside of our bond rating. And the upside is, if everything improves to those commensurate with its highly-rated peers, and we moderate the pension obligations while maintaining a very strong budgetary flexibility." That's a quote from the document. So, I think we're doing that. We've addressed the pension concerns, we have a very strong budgetary position, we would like to maintain that. General Fund, the general fund, the fund balance supports other departments and elected officials. We currently, Dean and I looked at a document that was showing a position of the District Court and how the general fund supports the District Court in times of lean cash flow, and the negative cash fund balance is another factor. The negative cash fund balances is something that Heidi Sheppi, our Treasurer, pointed out. We earn 2% to 2.5% on dollars that we invest through Michigan class. If our cash balances go negative, we lose that opportunity. So, and we do have moments through the year that we have negative cash balances. And last but not least, is we think there's a downturn coming. district court in times of lean cash flow. And the negative cash fund balance is another factor. The negative cash fund balances is something that Heidi Sheppi, our treasurer, pointed out. We earn two to two and a half percent on dollars that we invest through Michigan class. If our cash balances go negative, we lose that opportunity. So, and we do have moments through the year that we have negative cash balances. And last but not least is we think there's a downturn coming. You know, I, most financial prognosticators say it's coming. We don't know when or how, but I think we should have a little bit of savings in the bank to prepare ourselves for that. So as we sat and talked about all those considerations, we felt that twenty-five percent is a good number to land on. We believe that we can support the seven million dollar payment to MERS, which we have yet to see what that looks like once it hits our budgets. We have a little bit of concern about the impact in the departments with that allocation. But with the twenty-five percent fund balance and the recommended methods of dealing with excess in the fund balance, we think that we are in a very strong and conservative financial position.
Commissioner Jewitt?
Can you explain how we will grow that fund balance from the current fifteen to twenty-five percent?
We currently have it. We are at a twenty-eight percent fund balance right now on a thirty-nine million dollar budget. So the fund balance is there. We will, if this policy passes, we will take that fund balance to twenty-five percent pursuant to the policy as recommended.
Thanks.
Commissioner Lapointe?
I have a question. You know, you mentioned the various reasons of why you need a fund balance. One is cash flow, and as a matter of fact, Dean and I talked about it yesterday. Having been in a township, I've seen, you know, the revenue stream isn't consistent, so I understand needing that. Something just dawned on me last night after I talked to you. We have other fund balances that are restricted. In a pinch, this is theoretical, in a pinch, strictly for a cash flow basis, can you borrow money from another fund balance?
We actually do that. We have what's called a common cash account. In our accounting system across all funds, some funds have cash, some funds don't. But, for example, in the month of June, the general fund's cash balance was actually negative. We still continue to pay the bills and process payroll and charge payroll to that fund, but that cash is covered from that common cash account. So yes, we're using cash that's cash from another fund, primarily our tax revolving fund, or any other fund that's part of the common cash account. So yes, we do that. But when you look at the definition of a fund, the general fund should be self-balancing. It should have a cash balance that's positive all year long, especially since it's your main operating fund that's supporting a lot of the other funds that we appropriate money to, so.
But the point is, if you have just cash just sitting in some of these other funds not being used, it would seem a shame to...
Well, I don't want to say it's just sitting there because the treasurer does an excellent job of investing the excess cash. I mean, that's why she has done cash flow projections. We know what cash we need on a regular basis. There are times where cash is just sitting there, but it's to cover the bills and payroll.
One other thing, you mentioned it here, and I looked at some of this. We're currently at eleven million dollar fund balance, which puts us at twenty-eight percent. But then we talk about fourteen point one million, which would put us at thirty-six percent. Explain to me once again why we don't view our true fund balance as being fourteen?
It's, and this is indicated or specified in the policy. There are components of the fund balance that are restricted. The biggest share of what's in the general fund, which is included in that fourteen million, the eleven million dollar amount is unrestricted. You know, it's available. It's not committed. It's not restricted. The amounts that are restricted in the general fund are the amounts that we've loaned out to our septicage treatment facility. We have made loans to one of the townships. Those dollars are monies that'll come back to the county, but it's not readily available for us to use to budget. And it shouldn't be included in that, the level that you're trying to attain with your fund balance.
When Ghasby refers to fund balance, would they say we have a fourteen point one million fund balance or eleven million?
For accounting purposes, we have in total a fourteen million dollar fund balance, but it has different components. They've designated different components because they don't want you to fall into that trap. They don't want you to look at, we have fourteen million dollars that you can use to balance your budget or for whatever this body decides to do. It's not all available. It's not, if, the first item in the policy, it's called non-spendable. If we had inventory in our general fund, which we don't, that's not available to spend because it's tied up in another asset. And your restricted funds are the same way. Those funds are, they've been loaned out. They're coming back to us. It's not available to the general fund to use now. It will be when it comes back to us. And that's one way over time that we can actually increase.
But the reason, the reason I'm asking is, is when I saw this proposal, I'm a huge advocate of benchmarking whatever the county's doing. And looking at their audits, I assume to do an apples-to-apples comparison to other counties, if what they're publishing is their fund balance, I should compare, I should be comparing our fourteen million to what they're proposing. Just to leap ahead on that is, because most of them, I was surprised that they're running very large fund balances, north of fifty percent. So I don't have, I don't have a problem with the twenty-five percent. I don't have a problem with the real thirty-six percent comparing it to other counties. If we follow up with what we had said, which we'll get into further discussion in terms of what do we do with the excess? So that's probably a bigger conversation.
Okay. Commissioner Hundley?
Two questions. One is, so we have the Budget Stabilization Fund, which seems to have a very similar purpose to the additional fund balance that we're talking about. And I just wanted to understand a little bit better about what's currently in there and how is that allowed to be used? That's the first question. And how, what's the distinction, I guess?
So the Budget Stabilization Fund, it's intended to, so the reason we broke out the components of what to do with the excess over twenty-five percent is so that we have direction, the staff has direction as to what to do with that funding. Right now, we have a fifteen percent fund balance policy, and we have twenty-eight percent fund balance. There's no direction as to what we do with that. So our intention is to say, anything over and above the twenty-five percent, knowing this board's position on the pension obligation, we are going to allocate fifty percent of that funding to the pension obligation. Twenty-five percent will go to the capital improvements fund, and twenty-five percent will go to the Budget Stabilization Fund. If I'm not mistaken, this has been used in the past. There's nothing in it currently. Is that an accurate statement or no?
Close. And in the nineties, we actually had a department in the general fund that was called Budget Stabilization. This is a change from that where you would actually have a separate fund where you would transfer these dollars to, that fund then would have a cash balance and a fund balance that the board could look at in the circumstances that are explained in the policy to stabilize your general fund if you had a major, you know, if the state cut out revenue sharing or something like that. You could look at that fund then to help.
So if something goes off the rails in a department where they absolutely lose revenue, where there's an expenditure that has to occur for infrastructure or IT purposes, we would have the ability outside of the fund balance of the general fund to grab that funding and use it for that purpose. This is the second year that we presented a budget to the board that did not have fund balance used to balance the budget, and we'd really like to stay away from that if at all possible. So if there's a need mid-year, midstream, we can use that fund to balance or to take care of the need.
I'll just make my personal comment. That when I first was on this board years ago, we had, I believe it was around a twenty percent policy. And what that policy basically says is, there are some years when we have an expected income as a county, and our, what we want to spend on services is more than what we expect to get. So this, what this policy is saying is, we won't budget to spend more than would take us below that amount in our bank account. So that's, that's the point of the percentage number. We won't, we won't plan to spend an amount that would take us below twenty percent, or now, years later, it's been lowered twice since that time. It was twenty, then it was eighteen, now it's fifteen. Fifteen's a little bit low, as the Ghasby standards say. I recall, and no one at MAC can find any reference to this, but I recall a discussion where we had asked for a recommendation for MAC as to what they thought was a good number. And they were saying between eighteen and twenty-two was a strong number at that time. So I feel very comfortable with the twenty-five percent, but I would also be comfortable with twenty. So I think it's a good policy. I think the staff's really done their homework on this. And I think one of the big things for me in choosing to come back to this board was I wanted to bring sound fiscal policy. And this is one of those things. I want to see our bond rating get back to a triple A. When I first took office, it was a triple A. Since that time, it went down a little, now up a little. I'd like to see that again. So I think this is the right direction, and I think this is positive for the public trust in this organization.
And then, I guess I had one other question, and with the caveat that, yeah, absolutely, I think having, having some money set aside is, is good specifically because of our, you spoke about, we can kind of budget our expenses really well and the revenue we don't have as much control over. And it seems to me that the largest thing that happens to us is more sort of cyclical macroeconomic. The world collapses in two thousand and eight, and so our tax revenue goes down. We still have the pension payments that aren't cyclical. They are what they are. And so in order to meet that budget, if revenues have gone down, say ten percent, we're talking about cutting other things, not by ten percent, but by twenty-five percent or more. And so to have this, because with Headley and so forth, you can't then recover. You need to, you can't just find the money, which I guess is the argument for the government having the money now, even though they can only put it in money market accounts or whatever. They can't, like, invest it, and that's probably wise. But in the policy, so far as I could see it, on ninety-four, it says, "Best practice is to limit the use of fund balances to one-time expenditures to avoid creating a structural deficit." And I, I guess, it just, it just seems to me, there's really, I think what you said maybe answers my question, which is that we're going to, we're never going to budget to go below the twenty-five percent, because there's nothing really in here that says how we can use it when we need it. If we're keeping it so we can use it when we need it, there's nothing particularly in there that then allows us to use it and says, you know, what that process is, other than, I guess, you come to the board and we say, okay, we're going to take the lid off for now.
So to that point, there are two concepts in the policy. One is what, that you can go below the budget of twenty-five percent because of a specific emergency, and it addresses how we are to replenish that fund. So yes, if you have a need, you can go below the twenty-five percent. Our goal is to never present a budget that will use fund balance to balance the budget.
Right. I'm all there.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, I think, you know, historically, I believe the number was twenty-one percent for many, many years, and then it was lowered to either seventeen or eighteen, and then it dropped to fifty. That was at a time where it was projected that the county's financial situation was significantly worse than it is today, obviously. That being said, one of the things that always comes up when we have this discussion is that whole pension obligation thing. You know, I've, I've contended for many, many years, if the pension debt was a budget center of its own, we could address it better. The fact that we take that pension debt and we spread it over every employee throughout Grand Tewors County that's ever had an employee who was on a defined benefit, it does not give us a true picture of where that's at in our budget. It also skews the numbers that all of our, it looks like it costs us to do everything we do. You know, I, you know, and Dean and Nate and I have had this discussion before, and I'm sure we will have it again. And there's, they have reasons why they don't do it. But I have always contended that if the budget debt was a budget center of its own, all of us, the public and the commissioners, would have a better understanding of what that debt is and how we are in fact addressing it. When we, when we scattered, spread it over our entire budget, it skews our numbers. You know, if we, if we looked at what it costs us to hold a prisoner and to operate the jail for a day, that number is skewed huge by the fact that we have a number of sheriff sub-employees over the years that are on defined benefit programs, and all of that is charged back to each one of those employees. So therefore, you know, what's probably a thirty-five or forty dollars a day operational cost is projected out at about ninety-seven dollars, you know, because, but it's, it's truly not real costs. It's the cost of the pension debt. And, and I would really, really like to have a discussion about when we prepare our 2020 budget, that we bring the budget, the pension debt into its own budget center. And Dean will tell us why we can't do it. But, you know, we've had the discussion before, but, you know. And, you know, I'm very, I'm very excited about the fact that we have a double A plus bond rating. You know, that's, that's a very, very high bond rating. We're one of the highest in the state of Michigan. And, you know, for a number of years, we, we heard about how Grand Tewors County was on the verge of bankruptcy and a, and a public manager was going to come in and this and that. But the numbers didn't truly reflect that when you looked at the real numbers. You know, it was, we were not in that type of situation. Yes, we had a pension debt. Yes, we were addressing it. You know, maybe not as aggressively as we are now, but we were truly addressing it. And we were still carrying a double A and double A plus bond rating. You know, so obviously, you know, we weren't nearly as destitute as people thought we were for a number of years. So again, I have no problem raising the, raising the number. It was twenty-one percent for many, many years when I was here, that I've been here. And then it was, it was lowered on two different occasions, like Rob said. So I have no problem with the policy.
Commissioner Lapointe?
Yeah, I want to get back to the fourteen million. Is that just an ongoing thing? We'll have a gap of three million dollars between what you view as the available fund balance versus the reported fund balance? Is that just, is this a one unusual situation we're in at this point?
It's, it's not unusual. A year ago, that gap between the unassigned and the total was larger, because we do receive our payments from the septicage treatment facility in the township. And we have some internal long-term advances, too. But eventually, once we have those loans paid off or the funds returned to us, that fourteen million could be the unassigned. I mean, the fund balance will change. It changes every year depending on how we end the year, you know, revenues compared to expenditures. But that gap, right now, we're planning on that to be, to shrink as those payments come in. And we could schedule that out for you. And if we're fortunate enough where we continue to manage the overall budget like we have, we should add a little bit to our fund balance on a regular basis, so.
Okay. I'm just, for the record, I've always had an issue with entities, whether it be a township or a county, sitting on taxpayers' cash. Just, that isn't really necessary. So twenty-five or thirty percent, I think, is reasonable. If it starts to get above that number, because some of it's restricted, I would have, I would have concerns.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the proposed fund balance policy as outlined by the administration and finance.
Support.
Moved by Wheelock, supported by Jewitt. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work on that. We are on item nine-two, deficit elimination plans, page ninety-nine in your packet. And staff, you want to tee that off?
Sure. Start with the, the first item after the action request, which is the letter from the state. We did file our audit report on time, and I'm always amazed at how quick we got these letters back, that, you know, you've got a discrepancy or some issue. And the letter indicates that we have two situations where we have fund deficits. The building authority, we've had that now for as long as, since we've paid off the bond issue. And basically, we've explained to the state that that takes care of itself as we make the payments on that issue. The bonds were actually paid off, and we did that years ago to realize the interest savings. We had the cash. We weren't making a lot of money on our We had the cash, we weren't making a lot of money on our excess cash at that point in time, so we decided, the board decided, based on staff's recommendation to pay off some bond issues. And you'll see if you follow that through, the deficit elimination plan that is submitted to the state basically says that by next year, with our scheduled payments that we budget, that deficit is fully cured. And the state has never had an issue with that. The second one, though, is a new one, it's concerning the drain commission. And when you look at all of the individual drain funds that we have and also then the larger project that's in the works, the Cass Road, the drain commission component unit in our financial statements has a... It has a positive total net position. Now, we go from talking about fund balance to net position because some of our funds have to be converted to full accrual accounting, whereas your governmental funds are on, not a cash basis, but a modified accrual. We could talk all day about that, but...
And we wouldn't be any clearer about what we're talking about.
No. But, so when you look at all those individual drain funds and you combine them and you roll it up to a full accrual type of a financial statement, the bottom line is called the net position. And you basically are looking at the construction in progress, comparing that to the cash and the other assets and liabilities that the fund has. And again, that position has a number of components. There's an amount that's invested in that infrastructure, that amount is positive, but the residual balance is the negative amount of ninety-four thousand and sixty-six dollars. So, that, just to be brief, that includes the revolving drain fund, the Duck Lake, which is primarily the Duck Lake work that's in process, the work that was done on Old Mission, the Silver Lake level. And then, the biggest component is the Cass Road drain. So, all of those, when you add them together, we have a component of that net position that's negative and the state requires us to provide them with a plan that's going to cover that deficit. And what I have provided, what you have in your packet then, is how that would be covered and that is done in the drain commission component unit with the collection of those special assessment revenues. So, that's the plan that the state would want to see and the reality is, though, we actually have to make sure that happens.
Just, I'll take a question first, if you don't mind. The... Just help us understand, where did this debt come from or this negative number on the sheet? It's ninety-four oh six six. That was already spent, that the county commission, basically, you call it a allocation or forwarding?
Well, there's two items.
It was a loan, basically.
We actually advanced, the general fund advanced funds to the drain revolving fund, which were used to do some of the studies and the engineering that was done on Duck Lake.
And that was with the understanding it would be paid back?
Correct. When the special assessment districts were set up. That's part of that ninety-four thousand. The other, as is the work that was done at Old Mission, it was about thirty thousand dollars of work that was done last year that needs to be recovered through a special assessment.
And has that process started, the special assessment on that drain?
I don't believe the special assessment district has been established yet. So, I think the short answer is no.
What is the typical timeframe to establish a special assessment district?
There is a special assessment district up at the... For the Old Mission drain, and I think for all of them, actually, there are existing districts, the cost of that project has to be redistributed across that district. The drain commissioner initially had intended on applying or did have an application for a SAW grant. He was hoping to wrap all of that into one and expand the district at Old Mission. That has not happened, so the process now is to distribute the cost of that across the existing district. And that, to my knowledge, has not happened yet.
How long should it take?
Once the decision to no longer use the SAW grant was made, I think that is a pretty easy fix.
We're talking forty hours with a word?
I don't know.
Okay.
Commissioner, I would say it should be very quick, if not days, weeks, a couple of weeks to get some council help and...
Okay. Commissioner Jewitt?
I think that kind of answered quite, but I just wondered on these special assessments, especially for the ones listed here, are... Is the drain commissioner collecting on them currently? Cass Road drain, I know, is not going to be collected on until that goes out for bid and everything and they have an actual number. So, I guess I'm just wondering if we're collecting and if so, you know, is it enough to fix this deficit for them?
No, there are no special assessments being collected at this time because those... With Old Mission, I think the boundary is actually going to be expanded, so no, there's nothing coming in at this point.
So, we could possibly be looking at the next year trying to get these put in place?
Well, that's why on the spreadsheet that I provided, I'm assuming that that's going to happen in 2020. I, you know, it could happen. I think the earliest you'd have any of these on the tax rolls would be December, which is why I pushed it into 2020. Now, if the Cass Road bonds are issued for that project, the bond proceeds could cure this deficit if those proceeds came in this year. However, that's a huge infusion of cash and bond proceeds that would cure the deficit, but ultimately, you need to have those special assessment districts established because the bonds will have to be paid off as well. We need...
You're saying money from the Cass Road district can cover the debt of the Peninsula District?
No.
No?
No, but in... When you combine all of the drain funds together, I don't know how large that bond issue would be, but there would be sufficient cash and revenue, potentially, if that happens this year, to cure this deficit. But I think it's better to tell the state, what should happen here is that special assessment districts will be established and those revenues will come in in 2020.
What happens with the state then if 2020 comes and goes and we don't have any collection on these assessments to cover this deficit?
That would not be a good thing. You know, we need to have this... We need to collect the special assessment revenue, we need to start collecting the revenue, no later than early next year.
Okay, so...
They take this seriously. I mean, if we just send something to them that has no merit or no bearing, that will not reflect well on Grand Travers County.
So, to get a more definitive answer, though, on when we could collect these assessments that would come from the drain commissioner?
Yes. This board, in fact, I think it was late last year, directed the drain commissioner to come up with a plan on how these special assessment districts were going to be put into place and the revolving drain fund was to be replenished. To my knowledge, he is working on that plan and hoping to get it back to you.
Did he have any timetable on that or no?
It was to be done by the end of this year.
Oh, okay. Well, eight months into it already and no plan in front of us, so that's not good.
All right. I've got Commissioner Wheelock, then Klaus, then Hundley.
Well, I think the key piece of this is the completion of the special assessment districts. You know, we've looked at, expanded both of those districts. I know that the Duck Lake plan had some significant issues because you were looking at a very old special assessment district. Many parcels of property were not included in that, there were land splits, there were property, you know, sales of property and different kinds of things that needed to be addressed to create the special assessment district. But, in the Old Mission drain, the district was going to be expanded and there was something about the Silver Lake special assessment district that had to be tweaked a little bit, too. But the key component of that is those special assessment districts have got to be created. And, you know, whether, you know, whether there's something we need to do to try to help the drain commissioner make that happen or what, I'm not sure, but it is critical to this county to have those special assessment districts created and have that revenue charged back to the tax rolls. And, you know, I don't know what we do to... If there's anything we can do, you know, we've met with the drain commissioner, we've offered assistance, we just need to, you know, unfortunately, maybe hold his feet to the fire a little bit more because this is absolutely critical that this happens. I think Chris was working on some of those special assessment districts and creating those numbers, but we really need to make this happen.
Yeah, late June, I set up a meeting with Scott Howard, who we've been using as counsel for Duck Lake and some of these other issues. And we came up with a game plan and a step-by-step of what needs to be happening and who's doing it. And, not to be critical of the drain commissioner, but he was supposed to be here today and give an update. That was the plan that was discussed at the June Board of Commissioners meeting, that was discussed with Scott Howard with our meeting in June, but he's not here today. So, I'm doing everything I can to get this moving, but unfortunately, I just don't know where the drain commissioner is at this point.
And I know this board knows this, but we cannot step in and do these tasks for the drain commissioner. The drain commissioner is statutorily responsible to do these things, staff, the county, the commission, you cannot do what is statutorily required of the drain commissioner.
We can offer assistance.
We can and we have to do it. We have offered repeatedly.
Klaus and then Hundley.
So, Dean, you've committed yourself to the state or we're committing ourselves that we're going to see that we'll be getting the special assessment revenue in 2020?
That would be... That would be what I'm asking you to do. We have not done that yet and obviously, you have to be comfortable with that, but that is, you know, if everything were in place, that would be how you would cover that deficit. Those special assessment revenues for all of those drain districts, including Cass Road, would be coming in to keep that, those funds all whole and to pay the general fund back for the money that's been advanced.
I'm just assuming, I'm just track record with the drain commissioner, that we're not going to be seeing that revenue coming in. Is there a... How else can we handle this here? I just, I mean, our drain commissioner's not on top of it.
The... Currently, and these numbers are as of December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. You could process a payment, you could do a couple of things, you could consider the advance to the revolving, the drain revolving fund is just an outright transfer and expenditure. That wouldn't quite cover the ninety-four thousand. You would basically have to commit general fund money of ninety-four thousand and sixty-six dollars to say that that's just an outright transfer to cover that deficit with no expectation of it coming back. I think there are issues with that, that, I mean, I think that sends the wrong message to any of the drains that are in place, that the general fund is just going to take care of those drains. I believe you don't want to do that and that would not be my recommendation. But moving, as Commissioner Jewitt said, we are, you know, seven, eight months further down the road, there's been additional cost incurred here primarily with Cass Road. So, that number, you know, if we had to close the books now and report it to the state, that number would be higher.
Commissioner Hundley?
So, you've answered, I guess, what happens if we fail to get the revenue, which is we... The general fund will... I mean, if we get to 2020 and we haven't started seeing revenues, we haven't established what the boundaries of the drains are, basically, in order to satisfy the state, we'll be compelled to commit general funds or not the desired.
They would require something more definite.
Right.
The... If you read the letter in its entirety, there's a current... There could be a current effect or impact as well. Our track record with the state is good on our deficit elimination plans. When you look at the building authority, we have paid those down as we have told them we would. There was the Woodmere Building Authority, bonds were on this a year ago as well. So, you know, we have demonstrated to the state that we're serious about our deficit elimination plans. Having said that, though, they do have the ability, but they don't like what we submit, to withhold our state revenue sharing payments. So, that's a more near-term effect. But, you know, if we tell them, and that's still what I'm asking you to do, that the plan is to have special assessment revenue coming in in 2020 that makes us whole in all of our drain funds.
So, in the course of our budget contractions that happened over the last couple of years, I think I'm right, that this position used to be full-time and now it's something significantly less than full-time? Is that right?
That is correct.
It's been part-time since?
Two thousand and twelve.
Twenty-twelve.
Since two thousand and twelve. And in other counties, similar, if there are any, is it a full-time or a part-time position in the state?
Both. In this region, it's a part-time.
Right, but this region is ninety-three thousand and we have twelve to fourteen thousand for all of our surrounding counties, so I don't think that's a one-to-one comparison.
I guess that's what I'm getting at. We have a lot... Maybe, I don't know, but we have a lot of drains to deal with because we have more people and...
Well, it's not completely...
No?
Yeah, so, the drain commissioner would tell you that he... His position needs more time. He's made that presentation to the board on a couple of occasions and the way that was restructured was in two thousand and eleven or two thousand and twelve, there was an analysis of what the drain commissioner's responsibilities were as it related to the other components of the office, such as soil erosion and storm and stormwater.
Yeah.
At that time, Dean and Ms. Seaman, the then HR director, did an analysis of what that was and they came up with a percentage. So, the drain responsibilities were that percentage is what the percentage was, percentage of the board back then and is still currently today.
Okay. All right.
The number of drains are vastly different by county. I mean, there are downstate counties that have hundreds of drains. I think we don't have a number to add.
Thirteen, thirteen. Eleven drains to lake levels.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't know that we would, without doing a statewide survey, what... Who has full-time or what?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm just, you know, we obviously, we're going to need to make sure this moves forward and trying to assess what's going on and why. I don't claim to be an expert on any of it yet, so.
It's just an important piece of history that, yeah, it used to be full-time, but you used to have a whole lot more duties.
Sure, sure.
Commissioner LaPointe?
Seems like we're beating a dead horse on this. We've had this discussion and the long and short of it is, as I see it, is work's been done before the paperwork's been done. I mean, you need... It's not that difficult. There's guidelines on how you create a drain district, how you create a special assessment and go forward. And we've talked to the drain commissioner and told him, do those things first before you start a project. If you're going to do a special assessment on a road, trust me, way before the first dollar is spent, everything is in place and the cash flow is set to cover the bond. Concern I've got going forward, you've talked about bonding for Cass Road in that discussion and we're talking a bond of several hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially, that if there's an issue...
Probably millions.
Probably five million.
Yeah. Okay. Lots of money. And it'll be a bond obligation, which will have to be funded. And we'll have to take a look at, is the cash flow coming from the special assessment district over the period of the bond going to cover the payments? Based upon the track record so far, before, I would think this board would say, before we do anything, start anything with a floating bond for that project, I want to see that the paperwork is absolutely set, everything's agreed to and the cash flow coming in is going to meet the obligation or we're going to be in a much bigger hole than this.
I agree.
So, don't... The track record has not been good. We're only ninety-four thousand in the hole. And Cass Road's moving ahead and we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to date...
Probably eight hundred thousand to date.
Without the paperwork being done. So, don't obligate the county any further until we're really assured that everything's on track.
The... What I put in front of you... The, what I put in front of you, it was hard to come up with the plan for the drain fund, but I think it is the only plan. I mean, ultimately, we have to, the Drain Commissioner has to get those drain districts established and the special assessments billed so that those revenues are coming in. That's where we need to be, and that's why I presented it that way. That's what the plan is.
Commissioner Wheelack and then Jewitt.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to approve the deficit elimination plans as outlined by the Finance Director. I think we have to do that. I have a couple other comments, but I think we need, I think we need a motion to move forward with that first. So if we could get a motion in a second, and then I'd like to comment.
Support. Moved by Wheelack, supported by Klaus to approve the deficit elimination plan to send to the state of Michigan.
The comments.
And let's have discussion. We'll start with Commissioner Wheelack.
Okay, I guess the key components, you know, and obviously I was a major part of the decision to reduce the Drain Commissioner's position from full-time to part-time. But at that time, a couple things happened. Number one, the soil erosion and stormwater portion was taken from the Drain Commissioner and added to construction code. The other thing is, we did not at that time have any new or expanded drains in place, you know, or we weren't in the process of creating any special assessment districts. So the workload wasn't there at that time to justify a full-time position. Now, whether or not the workload is there today to justify that, I'm not sure. You know, that's a whole nother discussion. But the fact is, at the time that the decision was made in 2011, starting in 2012, I believe, to eliminate or to reduce that position from full-time to part-time, the major responsibility of the workload at that time of the Drain Commissioner was soil erosion and stormwater, and that was taken and added to construction code instead of with the Drain Commissioner. And we did not have any active or expanded drains going under motion at that time. So that, you know, there was a reason that that reduction was made at the time. But the fact is that that's not the situation today. The situation today is we're trying to expand at least three drains, and we need to figure out how we make that happen. You know, we have to have the elimination plan for the state. I think we passed that today. But then we need to get the Drain Commissioner in here and say, okay, by December 31st of 2019, we need these special assessment districts in place. How do we make that happen? You know, we've offered our assistance, but I think what we need to do is let, you know, here's a timeline. By December, by the time the tax bills go out in December, we want these special assessment districts in place. What is it going to take to make that happen?
Commissioner Jewitt?
Well, you know, these assessments, it's not something that's just popped up in the last few months here or something. This has been ongoing for years and years and years and stuff. But, you know, we heard from the Drain Commissioner here last month, and there's not, from what he said, there's not really any records of anything, whether it be maintenance or assessments or anything like that. Now, you know, I know there's districts that are trying to be reestablished and everything because of land sales and everything like that, but, you know, we can't sit here and keep listening to excuse after excuse. I mean, at some point in time, these assessments need to take place. Cass Road drain, I would be surprised if that even happens this year, just because they're still going over the drawings and redoing the drawings every time we talk to them, you know? And, you know, until these assessments get placed and start to kick down the road year after year after year, we're going to be talking about this every year.
Commissioner Klaus?
In 2012, the Drain Commissioner's salary was set at, was it $7,000 or $7,100?
A little over $7,000.
And then in the end of 2018, it was increased to $15,000. So the Drain Commissioner has received more money since the end of 2018 and provided no more results than what he had provided prior to that. So that's an $8,000 investment that this board made in the Drain Commissioner with zero results. Cass Road, he came to the board to purchase a piece of property that he needed for that drain. The board did not approve the purchase. He did make the purchase, as I understand it, himself. I don't know where the money came from. It is...
Borrowed it.
Pardon?
He borrowed it.
Is that money that he borrowed for that property, is that part of?
No, he borrowed the additional funds earlier this year.
Okay, so in...
So he does have some cash to work with now because of the additional drain note that he borrowed.
So then next year, there's even more money that is going to be on that?
Right. The number, if we don't do anything, this deficit becomes larger.
Right. And just for what it's worth, I've been monitoring Cass Road, and after that inch and a half of rain that we received this week, or last week...
This week.
No, it was this week.
Two days ago.
Yeah. I went down there, and there's no businesses flooded, not even close. So I know we're still looking at over a $5 million project there for a road project, but I just can't express my disappointment in the results of our Drain Commissioner anymore.
Real quick, Gordy, before we go to you, can I just clarify? What is the, other than this deficit, the Drain Commissioner has a bank loan out, I understand. What is the balance of that?
Well, at the end of, at the end of 2018, it was $475,000. As of today, it's $675,000.
Okay. And how much has been, if everything stopped today and all the bills came due, how much would be owed on the Cass Road project?
I would have to look at, the only problem with giving you that number is I don't know what invoices are outstanding at this point. I mean, I'm assuming...
To the best of your knowledge, ballpark, what would you?
Could I send you an email? I don't...
Okay. All right. Commissioner LaPointe?
You mentioned he's been taking out loans to finance the project in some amount, $100,000, $200,000, whatever the amount is. Is that based on the good faith of the Grant Jarvis County, that should he default on that loan, that the county's on the hook for that?
No.
I'm not an expert on drain.
Hey, when I was civil council, I did review those notes that were drafted by separate drain council and reviewed by bond council, and I did my own independent review. So I was, look at the law, and no, they're not backed by the good faith of the county. The worst-case scenario analysis would be if those loans are called, there is a mechanism within the drain code to, even though the special assessment district is not established, to nonetheless charge that to those people who live in the potential district. That would be, that'd be one scenario. The second scenario would be the bondholders sue. They sue the Drain Commissioner for essentially breach of contract and bring a dec collection action. That's a very remote possibility. But again, the county would not be on the hook if faced with the worst-case scenario.
But the taxpayers would.
With the taxpayer, the likely scenario is if faced with that, then that charge would be charged to the residents, the businesses. Even though the district is not created, there's a mechanism in the state law that allows them to be charged.
Just one, we're really getting off the target. I remember what the subject is, but...
It's an important issue.
They had talked about some time ago, you had moved, and this was before my time, you had split the duties and moved some to soil erosion, which is part of construction. We were getting, is it possible, or give any thought, to just move that whole function under the inspection, whoever runs the inspection fund that has $3 million fund balance? They seem to have a lot of money.
It's enterprise fund.
But if they had that responsibility, if they took, if, could that function take on that responsibility in its entirety? And then could...
Is the question is, could the Drain Commissioner function be transferred to...
Under the, under that umbrella or that fund or that function?
It's possible. You know, there, within the drain code, there are provisions to abolishing the Office of Drain Commissioner. And there is a, there's a process to go through that, that, there are models out there where the Drain Commission function is assigned to, say, a DPW or a Water Resource Department is created. I'm not familiar with anything where soil erosion is combined, but I don't see why that couldn't happen.
I mean, assuming over there, they've got staff. I mean, a lot of this sounds like it's just paperwork. Someone's got to just sit down and do some boring paperwork and follow up and whatever. And if there's, if that department has staff, and I think they do, it's just, I'm just, nothing's easy, I understand, but I'm just throwing that out as, it's worth doing because we've heard this conversation, that they don't have staff to do the busy paperwork.
All right. Commissioner Kofia?
I guess I'm thinking about the stated desire of this board to have the two special assessment districts established and ready to go, and we're collecting by the end of the year, and I just want to ask for the board's consideration. Is it, is it a possible route, just so that we can make sure this is happening too? There's a, under Michigan state law, we are able to ask any elected official whose salary or compensation is paid by the county to make a report under oath to the Board of Commissioners on any subject connected to the duties of that office. And we could just set up a bimonthly between now and the end of the year. We would like you to come in and let us know where you're at with those pieces. I would hope that we would be respectful of the crunch time and ask him to be first on the agenda rather than, you know, we go long sometimes, so get him in here, get our report, and get him back out in the field doing the work. But that could be a way that we, as a body that is supposed to be looking out for the fiscal well-being of our county, could make sure that we're keeping an eye on things. So it's an idea.
Is bimonthly, twice a month, or every other month?
Bimonthly, I believe, is every other month. So like, we would do...
That'd only be in December.
No, no, no. So it's July. So say we start in August, and then we have him in again in October, and then we have him in in December. It could be, it's just, you're not bound to bimonthly run. It's just an idea.
Okay. Well, we already have a motion on the floor, but after we resolve that, if you...
It just felt germane to this larger discussion.
Okay. All right. Are we ready to vote on the motion on the floor? Is everybody clear in what it is? All right.
Chairman, there were two resolutions, so are you, the motion is for both resolutions?
Yeah, I'm fine, because the one as far as the building authority, that's very simple. We have bonds in place and we're making the payments, you know? And what we did there is we financed some of those bonds ourselves because we were getting a better return on our money than we were paying in interest for the money that we borrowed for those buildings. So it made sense for us to do that and make the payments back to ourselves.
Okay, so we're clear, the motion is to approve both resolutions for the deficit fund?
For both the building authority and the Drain Commissioner.
Elimination plans.
Those two separate resolutions.
Okay. Everybody clear? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Redo it, roll call, please.
I'm sorry?
We need a roll call vote on this one.
I'm not sure legally we need to do roll call, but just to hedge my bets, can we do a roll call, please?
Sure. Let's do a roll call vote.
Okay. Jewitt?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes.
LaPointe?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Do you need anything further on this topic? Okay, we'll move forward to, we have MSU annual report presentation. How long, how long is your report?
We want to talk about...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jennifer.
It was an idea.
Well, I want to take a break at 9:30.
Yes. I'm fine with a break. That's the time to get our...
All right. So would you like to...
I wasn't making a motion per se. I just, I don't know what my colleagues think about that, but there seems to be a lot of interest around accountability and making sure that this is moving forward, so it's one possibility.
I think we can, we can put the Drain Commissioner on notice that he needs to be in here at our next meeting and give us some sort of a update of where we're at with these and, you know, what that means. He has to come here every two weeks and give us a report. You know, we're just going to need to push that. You know, we have to remember that he is an elected official. We cannot mandate his hours, but we can lean on him a little bit to at least come, you know, I am disappointed that this is on the schedule today and he isn't here.
Okay.
Because it is his, it is his responsibility.
Okay. So are we comfortable with that, or would someone like a formal motion?
I'm comfortable with making sure this is on the agenda for the next meeting and requesting that he make this formal report. At the next meeting.
Sounds good. All right. It is almost 9:30. We'll take a five-minute or so break. We are in recess.
Yes.
An interest in knowing, are there other ways via county departments to have the drain functions completed? So it's outside of an elected office. And I believe there are. I just, we need to have some time and some resources to investigate that.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking Gordy is for them to investigate what we could do, where the duties could be shifted and everything if that were to happen.
No, okay, I.
Yep, so this is a fact finding at this point. All right, any further discussion? We have a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Willock?
Yes.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Jewett?
Yes.
Henshaw?
Yes. Okay, are we done with this topic?
Yes.
Let's move on, and welcome our MSU Extension representatives for presentation.
Yes, thank you so much for having me. I appreciated the deliberative nature of this board, and I've learned a lot sitting here, so thank you for having such robust discussion. I am going to transition a little bit, though, to what we've done over the last year with MSU Extension. Again, my name is Jennifer Burkey, and I'm the district director representing this county. And again, it's my home county, so I typically feel especially proud to give this report each year. Before I transition to some of the details in the report, I do want to give a special shout out, because I usually forget this, Jenny. Each year Jenny nicely puts this report together on behalf of our entire staff team, and sometimes I forget because I just get through my talking points, and I just want to give her credit because she does a wonderful job putting together this report each year. And again, today I'm just reporting on the efforts from our MSU Extension team, both housed in Grand Travers County and beyond, so I'm going to go through some of our major impacts that I would like to feature.
And this presentation's on page 106 in your packet, if you'd like to follow on the electronic version.
Yeah. Again, I always like to just remind the county that through your investment in us each year, your dollars are being highly leveraged. We are funded by state, federal, county, and grant dollars, with grant dollars currently being the largest source of our funding each year. Typically, our, what we try to report on is about a dollar invested in us as an entity yields at least $6 in programs and services, a direct benefit to county residents. Last year, we reached over 8,100 county residents through our education and outreach in the county, and so I'm especially proud of that number. I feel like that's quite a few county residents that we made direct contact with, and hopefully provided them with resources and tools to help better their lives. I do want to introduce a new staff member that we have here today. We did have a transition in our 4-H program coordinator staff, and we're pleased to introduce Suzie White, and I'm going to have her stand up. Thanks, Suzie. She has great experience with horse and pony councils. She has a master's degree in animal science, and the thing that was really drew me to her as a, as an employee was she's just deeply committed to forming stronger partnerships and expanding our programs that we're doing within 4-H. We have a very large 4-H program, and we're going to be reporting on what we did last year. And again, I'm just tickled that we have Suzie here today, and will be working on behalf of MSU Extension. I always like to look at the pictures that we feature in our report, because I think those tell a story. And with 4-H, we know that 4-H is building our youth to be leaders such as yourselves. We're teaching them core responsibility. We're teaching them business skills. We're teaching them how to be more prepared for the workforce, and developing those entrepreneurial skills. So I'm looking at the pictures, and the one in the middle caught my eye, and I had to say, "Tell me more about that club. What is it that they do?" It's actually an outdoor adventure club, and they go to the U.P. each year, and they go caving. And I think to myself, there is truly something in this county for every youth to participate in 4-H. We also featured the babysitting club on the left-hand side. So again, teaching youth skills that they can market as, as to, you know, building their local, you know, cash flow, if you will, their pocket money, plus also helping families in our community with some highly trained babysitters. So we continue to grow our 4-H program, and again, it's just another wonderful year. As I mentioned earlier, there's truly something for everyone. You can see on the left-hand side all the different things that we do. We have robotics and sciences, archery and shooting sports. We do outdoor education, and we obviously have our small animal and livestock program. We were blessed this year to receive funding for a full-time AmeriCorps position, whose exclusive focus was working on STEAM, which is science, technology, mathematics, and those types of programs. She's been working in schools, as well as supporting some community-based gardens that have been percolating throughout the community. We also participate in hands-on learning. We had a nice-sized delegation of youth that went down to exploration days at the MSU campus, and the bottom-left picture is the youth that represented Grand Travers County actually doing archery where the MSU archery team practices. So to me, that was pretty cool. I would think that that would be fun for those youth to be kind of surrounded by some of those mentors that could possibly inspire them to do something else with their life. We also have problem-solving skills that are taught to our youth, and the marketing through our animal livestock program that we do. Again, keeping people healthy is another cornerstone of what we do at MSU Extension, and under Sarah Eichberger's leadership, we have several different programs that we're particularly proud of that are helping Grand Travers County residents stay healthy. The picture that you have here with our good friend, our, well, not really real Sparty, but our portable Sparty, we have Michelle and Jane that are there doing farm market education. So individuals receive kind of a referral by their doctor to say, "Hey, it's important for you to eat more fruits and vegetables," and then they can go down to the farm market and receive a tour, and learn more about how they can incorporate those fruits and vegetables into their everyday living. Michelle Smith is here today, and so, and Sarah's next to her. I should also do a shout-out for Sarah. And Michelle works exclusively with our SNAP Ed audiences, which again are individuals with limited resources, and she's working directly in schools, and helping youth make, learn more about healthy choices, and increasing their physical activity, as well as adults. Michelle's particularly skilled with some of our more vulnerable populations, and so she's very, very compassionate when it comes to working with developmentally disabled adults, and teaching them cooking skills to become less reliant on processed foods and eating making typically healthier choices. One thing I do want to give a shout-out to, as far as Grand Travers County being innovative, through the partnership with Grand Travers County MSU Extension, obviously the HR department, we're particularly proud of some of the work we've done around wellness. I know Sarah Eichberger last year helped lead the county and the employees through a process to look at what it is about wellness in this, in this county, and that kind of spearheaded some great opportunities. We've done some classes on Martin Luther King Junior Day, which is featured on the bottom right, which are healthy snacks that employees can take and bring as lunches and such. Also, through Jenny McKeller's leadership, we've brought some bike opportunities, so employees can utilize bikes during their off time, so again, that they can keep themselves more physically active. Something that's very interesting to note about this partnership is you're the only county that's taking advantage of, taking advantage of us in a good way, in this type of work, meaning we were innovative through Nate and Chris's excitement about this project, and then Jenny McKeller's obviously continued excitement to be the chair of that committee. This is something that's very unique to this county, and it's truly something that no one else is participating in, so kudos to you.
Jennifer, may I make a comment?
Sure.
So I would like to thank Sarah and Jenny as well, and Jennifer. This, our health and all policies, we're going to the summit on the 23rd, correct? Sarah and Jenny have been instrumental in helping us develop a policy that is nice, is good enough that Mac wants to showcase our policy up in Gaylord at their summit on the 23rd, and it's part of the community health, innovative region, health and all policies concept, and they want us to go up there and showcase that for all the counties that are in attendance, and I think that's absolutely phenomenal. Because they created the policy with our staff, under Sarah's and Jenny's guidance, this board actually funded that policy, and we are in full swing with it. So thank you very much for doing that, and I look forward to showcasing the policy.
Yeah, research shows that, you know, healthy, happy employees are more productive. You have decreases in turnover, and so that, again, are all cost-saving measures, you know, for the county as well. So we're glad to be in partnership with you. That's an expertise we have, and we're grateful that you're, again, taking advantage of us in that way. Another piece to some of our healthy activities is Caitlin Lawrence, and she does our Fuel Up to Place 60 work, and that is helping local schools write grants to improve their policies, systems, and environment, and providing an opportunity for change within those environments. So she helps support their grant-writing efforts that make those direct changes into the schools. Again, you see Blair here that received ourself, received the Silver Wellness Award, and they were presented that award in Lansing at the Capitol, but you can see some of the pictures before and after of some of those grant funds, and again, same at Westwood's Elementary. But what I really liked best about some of the pictures chosen for this slide are the youth in the bottom-right corner from Blair Elementary. When I looked at those kids, I thought to myself, they look so proud of themselves. They're on their school wellness team, they're helping to determine taste tests that they're going to be featuring to help improve some of the healthy choices that the youth are making, and so I was especially proud and thinking someday those budding leaders might have some other role that they might play in our community. We're also blessed to have Erin Bowman from our Food Core program, working directly also with some youth and some other targeted schools that, Traverse Heights Elementary is the greenhouse that she's been working on. Again, she's doing some fun, interactive taste testing, bringing locally grown foods and those types of foods back into the school. Little different focus than Michelle, but again, trying to fill those gaps in schools that Michelle isn't working in. But what I like about it is that it's bringing those local grown foods right to the schools. We also spend some time working on emotional health, and I know Patty Roth is housed in Benzy County and does some work here as well in, in Grand Travers, and the one that I really want to feature that I'm especially proud of is our Farm Stress Program. Thinking about some of the statistics that you were talking about, about youth and feeling overwhelmed in our community, we're also seeing that within our local growers. The cherry community is really suffering right now with low cherry prices. Obviously, that's compounded by some tariff issues as far as, not tariff issues as much as it is an influx of cherries from foreign countries. So our cherry industry right now is looking at really a net, a net loss on the cherries that they're kind of slowly cultivating this, this season. So last year, in response to some of those stressors, we had Patty Roth that's been teamed up with our agriculture staff to provide some support to local growers around farm stress. And we had 85 fruit producers that participated in that in our region, and we're especially proud that we are adapting some of our programs to better respond to some of those emerging crises that our local growers are experiencing. She also did some Stressless with Mindfulness with some county members as well, again, focusing on strategies to reducing stress as well as reducing anger. She did some weekly classes with the Traverse Bay Area Intermediate School District and Long Lake Elementary. Moving on to some of the cornerstone of the work that we do do with agriculture, we have a very diverse agriculture presence here in Grand Travers County, hops, cherries, apples, wine grapes, and we have staff all in the region that are truly supporting those efforts. I could probably spend 20 minutes just alone on agriculture, but I won't, Commissioner Henshaw, because I know you keep a tight chip here. But I really want to point out some of the work that we've been doing with our wine grape community. Thomas Tudaro, who's housed in Lelandale County, he has been truly transforming some of the education and outreach that we've been doing for that particular commodity. He's bringing truly speakers from, nationwide speakers across the nation that really are helping them choose better plantings and growing their grapes, so that we get more of that consistent wine that yields a higher value, plus also changing some of the cultivars around. And I apologize that I don't speak that language as well as he does, but I know that the feedback we've gotten from local growers has been very formative, and it's just definitely transforming some of the way that they're growing their crops. Obviously, we continue to support our cherry industry. We also do a lot of work with them right now around what is it the minimum that we need to do in order to get the, keep the pests off the cherries, and then kind of get the best profit that they can. Obviously, hops continues to be important here. We have one of the largest hop lots, if you will, in the north, and so, again, that crop tends to be a little cyclic. It's an interesting one. It's kind of, one could say they tend to be very, they like to change their mind on what types of hops that is in vogue for brewing beer, and that seems to be a local challenge that we're seeming to see with our local growers, but nonetheless, we're here to provide that hops education and outreach to that particular crop as well. Some of the work that we're doing around consumer horticulture, and again, not to call out Commissioner Lapointe, but he had shared with me at a meeting previously that he has a particular kind of question on a product, a plant he has at his home, and so I mentioned him. Just a reminder, every Wednesday at our office, we have trained master gardeners, and local residents can bring in their diseased, dying, dead plants, bugs, whatever it is that they need identified, and we have master gardeners working on our behalf. Last year, we had 61 active master gardener volunteers in Grand Travers County who worked on 3,500 different types of hours' worth of projects, and it yielded, if you assign like a volunteer amount, $86,000 value. The picture that's featured is the Pollinator Garden at Clinch Park, so when you're right near the bijou, you can see that there, and it's just a really beautiful project that they worked on to promote the knowledge about pollinator habitats. Again, I always like to talk a little bit about what we do to help new entrepreneurs grow their business and bring their ideas to the marketplace. Grand Travers County continues to be a leader in this area on this type of, I guess I would call it, impacts. We have a lot of very creative people in our community that have a lot of wonderful ideas, and they want to bring those to marketplace. And I asked Jenny this year, let's look at a two-year analysis of what we've done in two years. Sometimes a one-year snapshot can be kind of cyclic, and over the last two years, our Product Center staff have worked with 263, well, have provided 263 counseling sessions, which yielded 2.6 in increased annual sales, increased 30 new jobs, and had a new investment value of $944,000. Again, just a reminder, these are Product Center employees that work all across the state, and if, let's say Nate had a wonderful idea to bring to the marketplace, he's just got this amazing salsa idea he wants to bring, someone would help them work through that regulatory maze to take his award-winning idea from, you know, his kitchen to the shelves at the grocery store. So again, that regulatory maze is supported and helped them navigate it through the Product Center staff across the state. Again, I know you know John Amryan, and he's, he's here today as well. John Amryan provides our government and public policy, education, and outreach, and again, he's here to support our local municipalities, our county board as well, and I know you've seen him here before, and the work that he's been able to take part in has been, obviously, one of the trainers at New Commissioner's School. He also helped facilitate some of the statewide ballot issues. He's also facilitated several planning sessions, and most recently, I think he helped you with some goal-setting. So again, John continues to be here to support and provide education around how our local elected officials make the best possible decisions that they can. We also did do, and it would be Bethany Pry Cookie, and I actually co-facilitated it. We did two Real Colors workshops for county employees on Martin Luther King Junior Day, and I believe they were almost, they were sold out or pretty close to it as far as reach capacity. And again, just continuing to provide that education and allowing county to take full advantage of it. We also have Mark Brederland here, and he's been working very diligently on some pressing issues. We've talked a little bit about our rain and our, our wet spring and summer, and so John, Mark Rather, has provided some very timely updates for the local community around the area of water levels. You know, you could just drive down into Clinch Marina, and you're driving through a lake just to even get to a parking space to maybe take a walk around open space, and so, again, just those high-water levels are really critical issues, and Mark has so quickly organized several sessions that have been very widely attended by both residents and individuals that have a vested interest in high-water levels at those coastal areas. So I want to give a special thanks to him for being timely and being responsive to some of those emergent needs. And again, I always like to say thank you, you know, through the partnership with MSU Extension in Grand Travers County, we are able to do the good work in this community, and for that, we are always grateful for that opportunity to provide that education and outreach to our citizens. Any questions for me? Yes, Brad?
I know you talked about grapes and hops and wine and beer and stuff, but what is MSU doing for the corn grower, the soybean grower?
Yeah.
What kind of questions? What kind of support have you guys been for them kind of growers this year with the difficult growing season?
Thank you, that's a great question. I know with that we have been hosting several, I believe there's one upcoming in the next week, but we have a whole website currently devoted right now to delayed planting, delayed planting issues. So again, just a quick update is that with the wet grounds, it caused a lot of delay in planting corn and some of our other field crops, and so that's one piece that we've been working very hard on. We've been reaching out to those growers to make sure that they're aware of our resources. We also have a session for them, I believe it's in two weeks, and it's going to be done in Gaylord, which is kind of a central location for some of the other surrounding communities. So that's what we're doing around delayed planting. Thank you for that great question.
Thanks.
Yes, Gordy?
How big, how big of an area do you, or how many counties do you cover?
Myself personally, as a director?
Well.
This report is representative of the work that we did in Grand Travers County.
Right, but you have a large.
Oh, yeah, thank you. I didn't add that to my, my talking points this year, I'm sorry. So again, this is the listing of the resources and staff team that you have access to that have an assignment in Grand Travers County. Obviously, if a resident, and this has happened before, where someone called me and said, "Hey, I need a speaker at one of our local homeowners association on, on lake health, can you link me to that person?" Well, he's not on this list, but I still made that connection for that individual. So there's a statewide network that you have access to through your investment in MSU Extension. So this is a shortlist, if you will, of what we would tap into if someone in a resident or you here had a question about something that was outside of the listing here. I did that just last week for another resident wanting another question about something. So again, just accessing our statewide network is what we would do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions?
Just what portion of your budget is the Grand Travers County, is Grand Travers County helping fund?
Our county appropriation is typically at a, at a statewide level, about 16% of our operation for our whole organization.
Which equates to how many dollars in Grand Travers County?
Well, I would say then you get an 84% return on the money that you've allocated.
Going to politics, can you describe your staffing and how that relates, Jennifer?
Sure, sure. Sure, so we have two, two county employees on our team that are, Jenny McKeller is one, and Veronica Mork, Veronica Wilson, sorry, sometimes old habits are hard to break. And so that's how our budget works. And then there's like a cost for MSU Extension Services, which is a contracted item, and each year we are, appropriate that through the annual budgeting process, which is the cost for MSU Extension Services in your county.
To answer your question?
No. Maybe following up on Sunny's comment. I remember, oh, this was several years ago, one, there was a discussion of cutting that by a significant amount, and I don't recall what the outcome was. I assume we're now fully funding to, based upon whatever algorithm there is and what our.
Yes, you are currently funded at the level that we've requested for several years.
Okay.
So we, we believe that we invest back into Grand Travers County, and we are able to do such a large.
Can you share, can you share that number with us?
Sure, it's around $256,000, is that right, Jenny?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Does that include infrastructure that's provided? Okay, so some of that's in-kind office space?
The office space isn't a line item. We are, since we're in county-owned space, there's no, there's no cost, if you will, assigned to us for that as a line item on our budget.
Okay, roughly how many square feet do we provide?
Um, I, I'd have to go back to the office and count tiles. Sorry.
Just trying to get a night.
That's how I do it. Someone trained me how to do that, and so I've been following that. I'd have to, I'd have to.
I've been there, it's not large.
Yeah.
Not plush accommodations.
We have a lot of double bunking going on, so. If I can make another quick announcement, if there isn't any other questions, and I'd be glad to entertain them as well. Sure, so I just wanted to just give a special mention, we have a really great opportunity coming up in August. The Director of MSU Extension is going to every county in the state between May and August, and he's going to be at, in Grand Travers County, August 7th and 8th. And what's great about that is I was able to turn in those dates, so he will be able to be at the Northwest Michigan Fair and see all the hard work of our 4-H youth and come to fruition. We're hoping he'll have a special chance to maybe be in the auction, helping with the calling, Brad, so he might need some training from you. But the nice thing about it is he will really get a chance to really learn more about what's needed, what are the opportunities in Grand Travers County. I'm especially grateful that Nate's going to be coming to a luncheon that we're hosting in his honor, along with key individuals in the community that can provide information on what the needs are in our community and the opportunities. Jeff is truly an innovative person and has grown our organization through some grants and philanthropy opportunities, and if there's something that we have that's occurring here that's a need, he will be the first to help make something like that happen on behalf of our organization. So again, truly nice to have him here. He'll be having, he'll be at a grower's lun, a grower's breakfast, he will be at the fair, and he will also be down at the farm market. So truly jumping in, into all that we offer here in Grand Travers County.
All right, any further questions?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks to our MSU Extension staff for your work for our community, thank you.
Just, you know, to highlight on Jennifer's point, August 5th is the opening of the Northwestern Michigan Fair in Blair Township. If you have the opportunity to go, the 4-H youth in this community do a fantastic job. And in our, in our, with, with the help of MSU Extension, the fair, and the Northwest Michigan Livestock Council, they do a great job of, of showing these kids and showing their animals, and, and the community truly steps up and supports that. You know, I, I go to fairs periodically throughout the state, and there is nowhere that the kids are supported as well as they are here. Hands down, nowhere in the state.
And it's the, truly the volunteers working in partnership with us and with the fair. It's, they spend thousands of hours on this each year, all for the kids, and whenever I'm there volunteering, because I go there and I'll work two days as well in some of the auction areas, and every time I hear it, they say, "It's, it's just for the kids." You know, "It's for their leadership skills, it's for their benefits." So it's really the volunteers.
And actually, that's August 4th, not August 5th.
I swore the sign in my office says the best, but.
I would just add to what Sunny said, I mean, MSU is a big part of the fair, and, you know, a lot of people don't realize it, but it's, it's a year-round deal to plan for August and everything, and between MSU and the countless volunteers and everything, it's, it's actually a really big task to undertake and everything, so thanks for your guys' part and being a part of that and everything.
We're just glad to support our volunteers, so.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you again for the chance to be here today, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right, we'll move on in our agenda. Item 10A, Northern Lakes Community Mental Health Appointment. Page 122 is an email from me just saying, please put it on the agenda. We did hear back from civil council, and he recommends that the, the question to him was, whose responsibility is it to appoint and be within the state law? As, as we suspected, we just wanted to make sure that it is a joint responsibility that the board makeup of Northern Lakes Community Mental Health be in compliance with state law as to mental health boards, and it is a shared responsibility. Nobody has, you know, dibs on certain types or classifications of appointments. So if there is a, if the board is not in compliance, it is everybody's job to make it in compliance, so. That was, that was his opinion. So he said we should appoint someone who qualifies as a consumer designation, and we talked a little bit about what that is, and the mental health code describes it as a person who is or has received services through the mental health organization, or a like service provided for, by someone else. It's a pretty broad definition. So, and I give the example of myself, you know, years ago, I was having a hard time, I went to see a counselor. Well, that's something that CMH provides. Therefore, I have received in the past and would qualify as a consumer. I talked to Dan Lathrop, who had been recommended by the board. He had a similar situation in his past, therefore qualifies, so therefore I wanted to put him forward as, having been recommended by the ad hoc committee to represent us in that consumer classification. So I'll make the motion to appoint Dan Lathrop to the open. make the motion to appoint Dan Lathrop to the open seat as recommended by the ad hoc committee who interviewed him, to fill that as a consumer designation. Support? Okay, moved by Henchel, supported by Jewitt. Any discussion? Commissioner Wielak?
You know, I guess as a member of that interview committee, we did have one, for lack of a better term, true consumer that came and interviewed, and I don't know that it was fair to try to rank his responses to the other individuals that were in the room, you know, with how he was able to respond to the questions. You know, I always am concerned about consumer appointments to these boards, because I sometimes think that they are, they have trouble wrapping, you know, for lack of a better term, wrapping their head around the big picture of what this board does. But I believe there is a purpose for having true consumers on this board. You know, I personally am not going to support this motion. I would like to see, if this doesn't pass, I would like to see us go out and advertise for interviews and specifically state that we need consumers of mental health services as applicants. You know, I don't believe it was fair to have the one true consumer in the room with the other individuals that we interviewed. I, you know, I believe that the idea of appointing a consumer to this office or to this board is not intended to be anyone who ever seen the guidance counselor at their elementary school or high school. I believe it's truly, the goal is to provide a true consumer to this board, and I won't be supporting this motion.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Kofia? Yes. Klaus?
Yes.
Wielak?
No.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hunley?
Yes.
Henchel?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, next item on our agenda is new business 11A, 2020 Census, nothing in the packet. Commissioner Klaus had requested be on the agenda.
I would like the support of the board for our motion. I move that this board direct staff to draft a resolution to be sent to President Trump and all Michigan counties expressing our support for future US Census gathering information regarding citizenship. And I would have liked to have been able to put this on prior to, but it's pretty much a done deal at this point, but maybe in the future we can have an impact.
Support? Okay, we have a motion by Klaus, supported by Jewitt, and this motion is to direct staff to draft a resolution-
Draft one.
-to be sent to President Trump and the other Michigan counties supporting the citizenship question on future census questionnaires?
Yes.
Okay. All right, discussion.
Just a point of clarification, this is not going to be because of a decision of the United States Supreme Court, is that correct? I mean, that's my understanding, is that it's not going to be included because of a ruling by the top court in the land. And so to me, we can ask the executive branch to do something, but the executive branch doesn't have power over the United States Supreme Court. Their decision stands. So we can ask, but-
Right.
Right.
And we can send this out as support.
But we're asking the executive branch to do something that they don't have the constitutional capability to do. So I would question why we would be asking him to override something that is constitutionally defers to the Supreme Court.
I've only read a couple of articles on this situation, I haven't been following it super close, but my understanding was they ruled that it, for the reasoning he gave, it was, it couldn't, it didn't pass muster. But if he had a better reason, that would be a different issue.
Okay. And then the other thing is that the census happens every decade, so the way our presidential terms work, you're going to have a different president in place by the time the census comes around again. So I'm not going to support this, but I just had that question.
Okay. All right, further discussion? Commissioner Wielak?
You know, to me, this resolution kind of resembles one that the city passed a few years ago in opposition to the Iraq War. You know, it's not something that's within our, within our control, within our jurisdiction. I'm not sure why we would be involved in it at all, so I would be opposing.
Then we just pass the resolution with the Great Lakes Initiative, so that'd be along the same line. I mean, it's just a resolution.
Yeah.
The Great Lakes Initiative directly impacts the Boardman, Watershed, and other pieces, and we do have some influence there, so I would disagree.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Well, just, you could go on on this forever, obviously.
Let's not.
But it does count, in the long run, and the law has to be changed, because the census right now counts everybody, and that sets the congressional, sizes the various congressional districts. However, people within congressional districts, only voters, only citizens can vote, so it really gets into a equal representation where you have, might have a congressional district that was established with a number of people who are non-citizens, because it's based on population, but you have only 70% of those who are voters. So there's a whole, so it does indirectly affect us, certainly not to the extent perhaps of the, well, it's going down Lake Michigan or whatever, but I'll support, I'm not expecting anything to change dramatically on this, but I, the way it's set up right now, I don't think is compliant with the thought of one person, one vote. So I'll support it.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just remember, funding comes back to us based on the census, not based on how many people vote.
Pardon me?
The funding from governmental entities comes back to Grand Travers County-
I'm talking about-
-based on funding, not on how many people vote.
I don't think I said that. I think I said congressional districts are established based solely on population. However, within those districts, only citizens can vote, so you can create a significant imbalance. Has nothing to do with, your comment's completely different than mine.
On that specific point, I would also point out that the Senate, you know, North Dakota, South Dakota, H get two votes regardless of how many people are in New York. I mean, it's a funky system, but as far as the money coming back, you know, that comes back to support the people in the community regardless of whether they're, I don't know. I suggest we vote.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wielak?
No.
Lapointe?
Yes.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hunley?
No.
Kofia?
Nope.
Henchel?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, motion carries. Next item of business is 11B, Proposed Board Rule by Kofia, on page 123 of your packet. Commissioner Kofia, would you like to introduce this?
So this is just pursuant to the conversation that we had July 3rd around our anti-harassment policy, and the note around currently and historically, we have not required our elected Board of Commissioners to participate in the sexual harassment training that we require of all of our other employees. So as I stated I would at the last meeting, I composed a proposed board rule that would just require us to participate in this, and given the fact that the way the board rule is written, we're sort of late, we should have done it already. I went ahead and built in into my motion, the motion is to improve this new board rule and to apply it to us, the current board, by scheduling a sexual harassment training to be completed by all Board of Commission members no later than September 30th, 2019, and I would so move.
Okay, motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Kofia, second by Hunley. Discussion. So the motion is to establish this rule and then further schedule this training. I guess my question is, similar to what Commissioner Wielak said earlier in the meeting, what do you do if a commissioner doesn't, doesn't follow through with this?
Well, then they're on the public record that they're not willing to participate in a sexual harassment training that we require of all of our other employees, and the voters now have that information. We're not going to do anything else with it, but this is, we expect ourselves to adhere to all of our other board rules. This should be among them, and we require all of our employees, a condition of employment, to take this training. So any commissioner, I suppose, would be welcome to not follow this rule, and then the public can be aware of that, as the boss ultimately.
Comments, Commissioner Lapointe?
Just a couple things. One is, this is specifically sexual harassment. We don't have a sexual harassment policy per se, we have an anti-harassment policy. I'm curious as to why we're focusing on sexual harassment, because in our anti-harassment policy, they discuss harassment based on race, color, creed, religion, national origin, sex orientation, disability, age, marital status, public assistance, veteran, et cetera, et cetera. But just, I-
Why specifically this one?
Well, that's, yeah, that's a question. And then the second part to that is, the part on here, that after you've agreed that you've read the policy and you'll comply with the policy. I've worked in Fortune 500 companies for 40 years, attended many different types of training, never been asked to sign a document that I'll comply with it. I mean, why don't we sign something that will comply with all of the policies that are put forth by the county?
Sure.
I just think it's, I just don't see the purpose. I mean, I think it's almost what you would do with a young kid, say, "Don't run through the hall," sign a piece of paper saying you won't run through the hall. So I don't, the way it's worded, I won't, I won't support it. The other thing, I've got a concern. This was set up or previewed in the ticker yesterday on this, and I read through it and gave through it, and I'm really concerned about a comment in here that I like to read, that really sets the tone of this, and has me really, really concerned. Question was asked, apparently, and says about harassment, and you responded, "I'm implying nothing here." I'm trying to think about this broadly so we can have the best policies, because unfortunately, I've heard this happening in the past at R and other municipalities. I don't like generally comments by elected officials in the press that are putting out innuendos about, "I've heard from somebody that something happened in the past." You know, a question is to me, well, geez, I wonder who that was. I just don't think it was, to be honest with you, very appropriate. You could have covered, everything else was fine on why you're doing this, but to say you've heard from somebody without naming an individual, just kind of cast a shadow over the whole thing. So I attended, you know, we have, we don't, currently, it isn't mandated that we attend the Open Meeting Act or Free Information Act meeting. There was one in April, wasn't required, it made sense. It was the third time I've attended this meeting, but I took it upon myself, I attended. Three other commissioners chose to attend, a couple didn't choose to attend. So it's, you know, it's, I think it's up to the individual, that, I think it's wise, and I think it's good to have this thing made available for people who want to attend, and think it of value. But just to, my personal opinion is, I think it's some grandstanding to say we must attend, and then we must sign a document that says we'll comply with what the law says we must do and what the policy says we must do. So I'm all for making these available to the commissioners, I certainly would attend. I think it's of value, but I don't think to come up with something and say you must attend, you must sign a piece of paper, that you did attend, doesn't serve any purpose. It's my opinion.
I just had a question for staff real quick. Is there any record that you're aware of, of any elected official of Grand Travers County being accused of sexual harassment of an employee, or anything that's been substantiated? Has this been an issue?
We have had a, there was a lawsuit specific to, that was started as a sexual harassment violation. It was filed with the state EEOC, it went through a lawsuit, and ultimately settled out, or there was a jury verdict that did not include sexual harassment, and it included retaliation. But there have been complaints about prior elected officials engaging in at least gender discrimination, maybe not sexual discrimination outright, but gender discrimination that I am aware of.
Okay, and how long ago are we talking?
In excess of 12 years.
Okay, so, long before I was aware of the, Ethan, go on, okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Hunley?
It just strikes me as this is an easy thing to approve of. I, as far as any public comments, it seems to me, that strikes me as trying to define why there is a need without, I mean, certainly naming names would have been a problem. So, I don't know, that seemed diplomatic while still pointing out that there is a case, or, you know, that there's a, that there's a reason to have these, and in this day and age, this just seems like, I don't know, it seems like a no-brainer. I don't know why it would be a problem as far as signing it. I don't think that, I don't think that seems quite that strange either when people get hired on, and they sign that they have received and read their employee policy manual, and that they're going to be held to those standards. We're obviously already in a place where we can't really be held to the standards, but at least we can be held to account that we can't say, "Oh, gosh and golly, I didn't know," you know, and I think that would be the case for having us sign the thing. But, you know, that, I don't know, that just-
The case you mentioned, was that a county commissioner?
That was not a county commissioner.
Okay, because this policy is for county commissioners only as presented. Commissioner Wielak?
I guess what I would like to do is, you know, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with a board rule per se. I guess what I'd like to do is make sure that when we flesh out new commissioner orientation, that we include anti-harassment, bullying, whatever you want to call it, training as a component of that. You know, we, many new commissioners, and I've done it three or four times, I think three times, maybe four times, I've attended the MSU Extension training for new commissioners, and maybe MSU can take that on as part of that thing too, is to make sure that, you know, whether harassment and bullying is wrong, whether it's based on a sexual purpose or, you know, color of your skin, your religion, whatever harassment and bullying is wrong. We need to make sure that the commissioners and every opportunity we have to tell people that it's wrong, we need to take that. But I think this can be done as part of the new commissioner orientation, probably more effectively than putting it in a board rule.
Commissioner Jewitt?
Sonny pretty much summed up what I was going to say. You know, I would be more than comfortable with it going into our orientation, making it available and everything, the anti-harassment and everything, and if you want to include the sexual harassment part in it, but I'm not comfortable with it the way it's written, just because, the way it's written. But anyway, I do think it's a valuable tool, I think it should be available and everything, so I won't be supporting this motion in this form, but I am comfortable with having a motion to include it in our training.
Commissioner Kofia, did you have a comment?
Couple clarification points. First, perhaps you might remember at the July 3rd discussion, that it was suggested to me, I believe by Commissioner Wielak, that this be put in the form of a board rule, that it was more appropriate to go as a board rule than what I was talking about with the policy. So I just, I just want to name that. Secondly, to some of Commissioner Lapointe's questions about sort of the precedent for- Secondly, to some of Commissioner LaPointe's questions about sort of the precedent for expecting employees to take sexual harassment training, I'd like some clarification from our HR director. We do require our other employees to take a sexual harassment training and sign off, and they basically can't be employed without doing so. Is that correct?
That is correct. Every new hire is, goes through a, a training, and they actually take a test, and they get a certification that they pass the test, and that goes in their personnel file that we hang on to.
And the training is specifically on sexual harassment?
The training that we are providing to our, to the employees is, yes, it's directed as sexual harassment.
Sexual harassment specific.
It does cover a little bit of anti-harassment in there, too, but it's more specific towards sexual harassment. But it does cover other stuff, just not as, I would say, as detailed as some sexual harassment. But yes, it is covered.
Okay. So, I guess a question I would have for my colleagues, and I would be happy to amend this, strike the word "sexual" and simply have harassment training, so that then that addresses that broader, but, but with the understanding that we do, in fact, require all of our other county employees to take specifically a sexual harassment training, or they can't work for us. And so, I didn't feel, based on the feedback and the recommendation to create this board rule, that this was straying far outside the norm. It's basically bringing us in compliance with what we expect all our other employees to do, and that feels appropriate to me. And the comments that I made were here at this meeting, just as a point of understanding where I was coming from, not to try to create innuendo. I'm not going to name anybody who hasn't given me permission to name them.
Okay. Our civil council has asked me to comment.
Something to keep in mind is that sexual harassment is something that can be a liability, and having a policy and having people sign a policy, having elected officials sign a policy, can protect the county from potential civil liability, in the same way that we require our employees to do it. I think I can speak for other elected officials, I hope, but I certainly wouldn't have a problem going through that, so it may be to expand it, but obviously, this isn't the board rules, but for other elected officials to partake in that. Obviously, you can't make them, but certainly a suggestion that they do it. But I think it's, it's a good idea, if you want to protect yourself from, from civil liability. It does happen.
And it's demonstrating a level of due diligence on the part of this county, to be proactive, to the level that we're able, within the constraints of, we cannot, as the administrator pointed out at the last meeting, we can't discipline county commissioners or other elected officials the way we do, in the case of it being an employee who can be, you know, it can go up to the point of termination. So, this is a way of us demonstrating good faith, due diligence, and frankly, for the other elected officials, it's this body demonstrating sort of a good example, that we are willing to adhere to what we ask of the rest of our employees, so.
Okay.
Again, I'm more than happy to strike the word "sexual" and just have harassment training, which would be an umbrella, but I really believe that this board would, would be wise in 2019 to adopt such a board rule.
Okay. I had a few issues with this. You know, certainly, I believe we need more in the way of orientation, especially this year, it's been five new commissioners on the board. It's been like a big year for getting everybody up to speed, and so, I support the spirit of this, but I have a couple of issues with how we're laying this out in this proposal. I, you know, the time limit, it's more of a general guideline. If it's Day 46, you know, the person still did it, but the other thing is, I don't like paper tigers. I don't like giving the illusion of control when none exists. I like encouraging people to do the right thing, setting an expectation even. But I don't like that this is attempting to make a rule, county commissioners are given certain responsibilities and powers by the state of Michigan, and those are awarded by the voters. This board is not over the commissioners. We mutually agree in how we will conduct ourselves, how we run our meetings, but we can't, this board can't, you know, if somebody says, "I'm voting no on this, I want to do with it," we don't have any power over that. That's up to the commissioners, it's between them and the voters that elected them. So, I don't like that, but I, again, I feel we need a little bit more available to us in the way of orientation for new commissioners. So, I prepared an alternative, possibly a compromise, that we could all agree on. I will read it. I did pass a copy down. I didn't, didn't know how this discussion would go, so I haven't been passed out in advance, but my alternative is simply to say, "Orientation-type trainings shall be made available to elected officials of Grand Traverse County," not just the commissioners, "all elected officials," "as appropriate to their elected position, including but not limited to Open Meetings Act, Freedom of Information Act, sexual harassment training, general county policy orientation, and meetings with administration and/or support staff. Shall be the responsibility of the county administrator to ensure that such trainings are made available by qualified staff or trainers, and proactively promoted to elected officials as early as the day in which election results are certified, prior to taking office, and no later than within 45 days of taking office." And then, reimbursement of travel expenses associated with such meetings shall be limited to those allowed under the county reimbursement policy, and are subject to approval by county administrator. Couple of things I wanted to cover. That last little bit was, before we took office in December, we all went to a training, and it was unclear, because we were not in office yet, would that, you know, does the mileage? Okay, it's covered here. If the administrator says it's covered, it's covered. So, there was some question about that, and a little confusion. I got a couple of different answers at that time. So, covered that base, but this says it will be made available and encouraged. So, I was wondering if it's something, not exactly what Commissioner Caffey wants, but maybe we could all, you know, agree on making it available.
I would, I would just change the word from sexual harassment to anti-harassment, which ties to the policy, and I think it's a broader issue. I don't, I realize there's the focus on sexual harassment, but there's a lot more things that go on that people should be made aware of, other than that, so I think it should be broader.
And the other issue, another issue I had, it's very minor, but the proposed policy specified who has to do the training. There might be someone in that office more qualified for a certain training, so I kind of wanted to loosen that up and say, "It's up to the county administrator to choose the best person." So, those, those are my thoughts. I'm not saying we have to pass that or change it today, but I just wanted to offer that, you know, kind of put it out there. Commissioner Caffey?
So, two, a couple of things. One, this is, this frankly, for me, doesn't, I appreciate the effort, Mr. Chairman, that you put into this. However, "shall be made available" is not the same thing as saying, in our board rules, that we will take this training. And so, and then another point I would like to make, that is that every two years, this board sets a set of rules and expectations that we shall do. We decide collectively that we will hold ourselves to these pieces, including, you know, the way we make motions, and the chairman can call us out of order and shut us down. We agree to that mutually, to hold ourselves accountable for our conduct. And to me, this falls under that, and I believe that it is appropriate, and I, and as I already said, I'm willing to, you know, strike the word "sexual" and simply has harassment training, but I believe that we should hold ourselves to this standard, particularly appreciating, appreciating that unlike the rest of our employees, if we are credibly found, any of us, to be harassing, sexually harassing someone, we cannot be terminated the way the rest of our employees are. So, to me, this is a good faith effort, and it is not, with all due respect, a paper tiger, because as our civil council just stated, it is helping us with liability issues as well. And that is not an insignificant demonstration by a municipal body, that we are doing the best that we can, under the constraints that we have as elected officials. I believe it is important for us to set this as a standard expectation and a norm, and not merely a suggestion.
Commissioner Hundley?
On your work here, I absolutely appreciate the addition of the reimbursements, the making it available prior to the swearing-in, all of that is good. And also, opening it to elected officials, not strictly county commissioners, I think those things would all be improvements to what Commissioner Caffey had, but like Commissioner Caffey, I think the "shall be made available" is squishy, and "as appropriate to their elected position" is squishy. And so, I guess I would turn to prosecuting attorney and ask, by, by diluting this policy in those two specific instances, by making it available rather than requiring it, and by making it as appropriate to their elected position, so that it kind of may or may not happen, because, well, it's not, it's not a thing here, so we don't need to have it, would that, would this policy that Commissioner Henshaw prepared for us, would that still serve the, the purpose of mitigating the county's risk in instances?
I think having "shall attend," just as you do, just mirror the language in the rest of the board rules, is going to be much more effective. And again, signing something just as we have our employees do, is proof that, that would protect the county, that if there were sexual harassment, that this person has been made aware, and they were provided with this information.
Right.
So, I think both of those steps are important.
If you have the class, like we had the class in April, and I attended, and I signed that I attended the Open Meeting Act, I did, some of those others didn't, that would give you the same cover, that the class was held, the individual attended, whether they did it voluntary, or it was mandated, right?
It's not the same requirement.
So, you're saying because you attended the Open Meetings Act voluntarily?
Yes. You have, you have a, the county provides the training, the individual attended the training, they signed that they attended. We have a login sheet, which I signed when I attended the Open Meeting Act meeting. So, doesn't that give the county necessary cover in a liability versus the person not only attended, but he said that he attended, and he'll adhere to it?
Well, this would be that you would comply with what you were taught, not just that you attended, but, but that you would comply with what you learned, and that would provide some benefit to the county, if the county were sued, saying this elected official committed sexual harassment.
How about all the other policies in here, about physical abuse of people, and there's other, other policies that HR presented us? I don't know if I have the list here, but there was, there are a number of other ones. Should we?
If there's a concern about a lawsuit, maybe we should be signing, yeah.
So, we should be signing that we agree with, that we'll comply with all of these other policies?
No, no, because not all of these policies, like the Open Meetings Act, there have been issues in the past, maybe, I don't know if you want to speak to this, Chris, but maybe that would be a horrible idea to sign, too, but...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's never a bad idea. It's never, you know, the, being the former civil council, I can tell you that, you know, there's two theories of liability. There's the individual, elected official, and then there's the county itself. And there's this concept, it's, it's based on a U.S. Supreme Court case, Monell, that says if the, if the county has a policy, or doesn't have a policy, of doing things, that exposes the organization as a whole to liability. So, from a liability standpoint, whatever you can do to protect yourself, you know, is a prudent, you know, legal, legally prudent thing to do, whether, whether, whether you want to do this, whether you feel it's necessary, you know, you know, that's a practical decision that I think you guys have to, have to figure out.
Other conversation?
My question, I, I think the prosecutor kind of answered it anyway, but what was presented here by Commissioner Henshaw? Does that suffice?
I think you need something, if you're going to be concerned about civil liability for the county, something saying that you not only attended, but you were in attendance, but that you agree to, you're aware of the policies, and you agree to abide by them.
So, if we have that, that language added to what he wrote, then it's fine.
I didn't receive a copy of what he wrote, but from what I saw, then that would...
Should we include violence in the workplace policy also, that we will be compliant with that? You see where I'm going with that?
I see where you're going. And to some extent, sexual harassment in the workplace is much more rampant than physical violence in the workplace.
Correct.
But we've had no record of, the one, the thing we're facing right now with the commissioners of that, anyway. I see, I see your point, but...
And just because it's not reported, doesn't mean it doesn't happen.
Correct.
I am personally aware of a number of cases involving employees within the county that have been investigated, to somehow think that because we're elected, we're immune to that, or above that. I think it's a, it's a safe policy to have.
And I am personally aware of three women who have spoken with me personally, where it has involved past county commissioners. Okay?
I, I, we just went through that not that long ago with a Supreme Court justice, and I just despise people making loose comments, and all of a sudden, now, who was it? And go on, and you're guilty, anyway, that's, and that's probably what's causing me to have some issue with the principle of this whole thing, is, it's up to me, I mean, the voters will determine. I will attend it, like I attended, which a couple of you didn't. The other ones are made available to us, so let them, let them decide. But I just think the fact that someone's going to sign a document saying, "I will be in compliance," if they're going to do something, and they're going to think, "Geez, I signed a document saying, I'm not, I will be in compliance, I won't do this," so...
They're, they're still going to do it, but it's going to protect the county. It may not protect that person.
I, I guess I question...
As a county...
And in fairness, the, part of the point of the sexual harassment training is that it gives a comprehensive scope of what could be included as sexual harassment, because I think sometimes genuinely, somebody may misunderstand that what they are doing actually crosses the line, and so, this is a, a way to make sure that we are all very clear on what that line is.
But we're all agreeing to make the class available, to make the session available, and even expanding it to all forms of harassment, so that's not...
Yep, and I've agreed with that piece.
If I could, if I could make a suggestion, maybe, maybe for today's purposes, maybe what we should do is take Commissioner Henshaw's language, take what Commissioner Caffey has put together, maybe we should meet with Noel, and maybe give you some alternatives to consider at a future commission meeting, if that's what you want to do.
I question the, the liability question, is if you tell someone they have to do something, but you don't have the authority to tell them they have to do, it's the same as strongly encouraging them to do something. We could include in here not just elected officials of Grand Traverse County, but Leland and Wexford as well, and why don't we throw the governor in the mix?
We're making board rules.
We have the same amount of authority in those cases. I mean...
These are our board rules for Grand Traverse County.
Please don't interrupt me. I'm to order, thank you. My point is, it's the same amount of liability mitigation, because in effect, all we're doing is strongly encouraging people to do something. Now, if we want to make it so that if next election season, people can put in their negative campaign flyers that so-and-so didn't complete a training that the board rules said they had to, that's the road I see we're going down. We're, we're trying to make this a more political issue, when in effect, legally, under our authority, we don't have authority over individual commissioners. It's still up to individual commissioners whether they're going to comply or take the suggestion. I don't see a difference in liability. Commissioner Hundley?
I, I think what I'm hearing is, if there is a, if there is a complaint that turns into a lawsuit, and they sue the county of Grand Traverse, because we don't have policies in place to take care of this stuff, and that's our fault, because we, if we don't set up those policies. If we set up those policies, they can have a complaint against the person who did it to them, but it's harder to then say, "And the county owes me a million dollars in damages." I think that's what I'm understanding, and that...
And maybe, you know, I think Chris Forsyte's idea was, was prudent. Maybe we take some time, Pitfallen and I could look at this, we could draft policies, we could look into and research for the board, the liability, and what would, specifically what would help us. what would help us, so that we can present that, and then the board can take their time and make a, and make a more informed judgment call on this issue.
I'll support that. Commissioner Relach.
I guess what I'm coming back to is, you know, I would, you know, I appreciate the idea, I appreciate the concept, but I think I'd like to strike the term sexual. I'd like to address all harassment from all purposes, you know. And I think as part of this board rule, I think we need to make sure that as part of orientation, which it's under, that all county policies are reviewed with newly elected officials. I know it's going to take some time, but the bottom line is, how do you enforce county policies on county employees if their bosses don't have to adhere to them or aren't even aware of the policy? You know, I think we need to probably sit on this just a little bit and take a look at it, because, you know, as elected officials, whether it be a county commissioner, you know, this specifically is being put into the county commissioners' rules, which I understand, and it's, the scope of that is pretty small. But the bottom line is, if we're truly trying to look at the bigger picture, then we need to look about whether or not all elected officials or appointed officials comply with all of the county policies. And that includes the anti-harassment policy, which is already in place. You know, I don't know that we need to create a new policy per se. I think the board rule is in that commissioners must comply with county harassment policies. I believe that's all we need to have, is that the anti-harassment policies will be complied with by all elected officials. But I think as we talk about the orientation component, which, you know, is where this is being put under, is under orientation, as part of that training, we need to make sure that commissioners understand the policies. You know, are we, are we holding ourselves to the same standards that we're holding our employees to? And if, you know, commissioners aren't at least trained or have some understanding of the county's policies, how do they know whether or not they're being held to a different standard? You know, as far as signing off on the page, now, I have employee handbooks that every one of my new employees gets, and at the end of that, there's a signature sheet that says they've read the handbook, they've had the opportunity to ask questions, and those questions have been answered. You know, and they sign that. I require it of every one of my employees.
They follow those rules, right?
Well, not quite as well as I'd like some days, but it is what it is, you know.
I think Mr. Commissioner Klaus.
The, I'm just going to focus on the potential lawsuit, you know, issue. If Grand Travers County, if we were as a board that concerned about lawsuits, we sit here at a facility with a boardwalk down by the Boardman River, that is by far probably our greatest hazard for kids running and jumping in the river, in the water. I think it's reaching pretty far, you know, to think that a signature by a commissioner on a document would head off a lawsuit, it would be greater than what that actually sits out there.
Commissioner Jewitt.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to table the proposed new board rule until legal counsel can put language together and bring back to us. And that language could also, or will also probably include a signature of some sort.
Okay, we have a motion to table, it is in order because there's a motion on the floor.
Support.
Okay. I had a tie up a coin. Moved by Jewitt, supported by Koffea, to table motion on the floor pending legal review. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Move on in the agenda to second public comment. Even the public wish to speak at this time, step up and let me speak on anything you have not spoken about at first comment. And Matt, if you could just clarify the topic you're talking about, it'd help us out a lot.
Matt Schick, Traverse City, Michigan. Deja vu all over again. I mentioned that I was on the Traverse City Human Rights Commission for two terms, and it made me think, when I first got on the Human Rights Commission, reading some background information that was given to us by a local law firm, and the issue had discrimination relative to sexual orientation. And it gave, I thought it was coaching advice on, there was no issue of harassment discrimination, but it was coaching advice that you would tell someone that wanted to bring a case before the board, and then eventually before the city commission, that the advice was, and it was, it sounds kind of juvenile in one sense, is that, say if you, I'm trying to get it verbatim, say you had an employee that would walk up to the water fountain that was surrounded, had a lot of people at the water fountain talking, and when you approached, you know, you were the victim here, and everybody walked away, they got quiet and then they walked away. That was a case for discrimination. And I'm thinking, this is rather interesting. It came from a local law firm telling, coaching the Human Rights Commission how to engineer a case of discrimination. Yeah, and I know, government are like the deep pockets for a lot of these things. It's very unfortunate that, but it's also a social engineering technique that I think you ought to be aware of. I'm not pro discriminate, well, actually, there are some things that in society we all discriminate against. I can't go into Myers without wearing my shoes, they discriminate against people that are barefooted. If I go into a candy store, and I've seen kids do this, is they say, I want that candy, but I don't want that one, they're discriminating for one thing, but discriminating against something else. It gets a little bit more serious in real life when harm comes about, and I think Commissioner Koffea might be a little bit closer to the truth here. Sexual harassment, either gender, and that is true today, but you may want to consider all of the options on this thing. I think you want to listen to Commissioner Henshaw's advice as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Anybody else for second public comment today?
Hello, Andy Mark, 2875 East Railroad Avenue, Interlaken. Liability. How about you just have a policy that simply says I'll only do good things, won't do bad things that put the county at risk? Covers everything. But might want to also include appointed officials like myself and others that are not necessarily elected, because we don't fall under the purview of as an employee, and we're not the elected, so we're kind of in the middle there. So you might want to make sure you remember us in that equation, too.
That's a good point.
Sometimes you try to overcomplicate things, try to find a solution for a problem that's not really there, but might be, but could be, and might be misinterpreted by somebody as to what actions were taken. We just happened to talk about that earlier, about plastic bags and paper bags, how we found a problem, found a solution, which treated a bigger problem. Keep it simple. It's always easier. And don't forget about us, appointments. Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to commissioner reports. Anything to report? Commissioner LaPointe.
Let's bring up the topic that I think a number's got emails on regarding Metro Fire and Maple Bay House, and what all is going on there. And I think I copied a number of you on my last email, but Chief Parker had contacted me regarding that issue first, and I was a little familiar with it, so I kind of jumped in and offered my two cents, and I talked to Nate, and I talked to you, and trying to rectify. Just so you know, I went beyond the scope of my authority. It wouldn't be the first time I've done something like this. And I suggested to the chief of Traverse City and to Parker that perhaps the solution is this, we split the bill. I think we all shared in the folly of this thing. So if it's a $15,000 bill, I said, the county pony's up a third, Traverse City Fire a third, Metro a third, and we get on with this. I think they were given the authority to move forward, and they have, in good faith by the county. And they spent a lot of time and effort and commitment to go ahead with that project. And in my opinion, to pull the rug out at the last minute is not proper. But I do understand the county's position. We did not budget for a cleanup charge, and if there was some way to avoid that, that would be positive, but we're not going to be able to determine that in the timeframe allowed, so. Just so you know, I'm, I've, that's the, that's what I would recommend we pursue is pursuing that manner. So I don't know if there's been any updates, further updates on that?
Well, I was just going to clarify for the public, because there's, you know, we know a lot of people watch this meeting, not necessarily even right now, but later on. So the situation is that the Parks Board about 10 months ago, before most of us were even here, voted to instruct staff to get rid of the house on the east side of US 31 at Maple Bay Park. So it's an old farmhouse, it's reportedly in disrepair, I've not been inside it. I know the outside of it is, you know, hasn't been painted in many years, you can tell. The roof looks to be in good condition. So we haven't talked about it all year in the Parks Committee, the Parks Commission. So it came to us last Thursday as an expenditure of almost $16,000 for the cleanup of this. It was not a budgeted expense, it was not an expected expense, it was nothing we had talked about as a commission all year long. And so, you know, I said, why would we pay? I mean, have we tried giving the house away? I had a house that I used to live in given away, somebody jacked it up and moved it down the road and put it someplace else. My grandfather had a house done that way, and the house across the street from that one had been done that way. In all cases, free, give it away, the person takes it away. I said, have we even pursued that, even looked into it? The answer was no. I said, well, before we go spending $16,000 that we didn't expect, we should probably look at the free options. And so the Parks Commission voted to get an opinion in that direction, but did not take action on approving the expenditure. Come to find out, the expenditure wasn't even out of Parks funds, it was brought to the Parks Board to spend money that's under this board's jurisdiction. So I, there's a lot of confusion there. And the cleanup bill, the cleanup quote we got for $16,000 was from only one vendor, and it had been posted two days prior to our meeting. So everything's really last minute, and I'm not going to point fingers, but obviously something got thrown together at the last minute. And, you know, the fire services, it looks like we've got, I don't know, a half dozen to a dozen different counties coming to this training, people from those areas. So now, Grand Travers County taxpayers are expected to bear an expense for all these other counties, as well as, you know. Now, in the absence of a free option, if we absolutely knew nobody wanted this, there was no cheaper way to get rid of it, it'd be a different story. But we haven't looked at the cheaper options, so.
But just for clarification, some of the people probably don't know, the reason this house has to be gone, it was, it was part of the DNR grant, which stipulated the house has to be taken off the property back in 2002.
It's partially true.
Pardon me?
It's partially true.
What that agreement said was, anything that was non-recreation related had to be removed from the property within 90 days.
And a vacant house sitting there for 18 years is not, I've been through this in Acme, and they're very strict in the interpretation of recreational use. So it will never pass muster.
Quite simply, start a baseball bat in it.
Plus, the police have been in there on several occasions, doing different exercises.
Yeah.
The house has been, like I say, vacant for, since.
Couple decades.
Prior to 2000. And the thing is, everybody acted in good faith, Metro Fire did, all of these various fire departments, they were told, shoot the lock off, you've got this piece of property. And then they've all made arrangements, they've staged the house already, people have made reservations coming up here for this project, which is beneficial to the community. And this is not just a, let's watch the thing burn, it's a arson investigation, they're going to go through numerous steps, they're going to have a mock trial afterwards, trying to show the evidence, how it stands. So it's a, it's a big deal, and shame on the county for not knowing all of the aspects of this before telling these parties it's yours to pursue. And I don't see how we can back off of that, because there was never stipulations, I understand, unless you know different, that they were told they had to clean up the mess. They were. So who told them, I mean, who told these parties that they were going to build up their whole stuff?
The direction came from the Park Board to get rid of the house. So I talked to Joe Berry, our facilities director, we spoke specifically about how neat it would be to have a controlled burn, we have not done that in quite a few years. He went from that point and made contacts with the fire departments, the police departments, the state police, and grew this into a very detailed training exercise. There was never a direction how to get rid of the building, nor was it said to come back to the board, but we aren't clean on this, quite frankly, on a lot of different levels. That said, at present, we are following the bouncing ball. Parks and Rec gave us direction to go out for, well, they didn't go out for an RFP, but we are going to go out for an RFP at this point to any person that wants to have that house, they can come in, remove it, eat the expense of the removal of the home, and return the property to green space. I know there are discussions in play about changing the direction potentially, but right now, we are following the bouncing ball as to who has what authority. Right now, we have Parks Board direction to move forward, and that's what we're doing.
So the one quote, which you write, come from just one source, but the removal of the house as it stands, I think, was significantly more than the cleanup of the burned down house, right? Right? So the cleanup, whatever, there's going to be some removal of whatever hazardous waste or whatever results from the fire, but then there's also the foundation that they're having to remove. If we got someone to say, we're going to lift the house and cart it away, they're not going to cart the foundation away, are they? I mean, there's still going to be that cost, which is going to be probably something more than half of whatever the $16,000 that we're talking about, is probably a removal of the foundation, is my hunch.
Unless the agreement with them is that they return it to green space.
Oh, that if they buy the house to remove it?
They get it for free, but they got to leave it as green space, meaning they've got to mitigate the basement.
So they've got to do the basement, okay. Okay, I mean, yeah, and the whole timeframe on this is pretty tight. And it's a 20-year-old derelict building, I mean, the building is older than that, but it's been derelict for 20 years. Okay. I mean, and did we get any sense, or do we have any sense of, were the other parties willing to cost share with us if it went that route?
Like I said, there is, there are active discussions about all of that. There are people trying to find available resources, you heard Chief Teller refer to that as well. I know that Metro Fire is attempting to look at potential resources that they can cost share this with.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think, I would like to, sure, pursue the option, and if we can get to that point, to, you know, defray the cost, that would be great without stopping the controlled burn from happening, which I know there's a timeframe, you know, the winter comes soon, so.
Well, the training is set.
Yeah.
It's set for September. Actually, training activity starts in August, and it goes through September with the ultimate burning down of the house. The Parks Direction, Parks and Rec Direction at this point, it didn't reverse that, it just kind of pumped the brakes on it and said, are there other options? We're working through that discussion right now.
Okay. And reiterating, we were going to get rid of the thing regardless of the controlled burn, so there was, our guess was there was going to be a cost, we didn't know what it would be, so, okay.
Having been involved in a few of these controlled burns over a 36-year lifetime that I spent in the fire department, there's a huge amount of training available when you can deal with live fire. You can. You can do all the simulation you want, but the fact is, when you're dealing with live fire, particularly in these old buildings like this, they don't have fire stops. They have all kinds of different situations of the way the walls are constructed. And there's just a ton of training that happens. You know, Nate talks about the fact that you're going to start training a month before you burn this thing down, you know? And my guess is, you know, I haven't seen their training plan, but my guess is, they're going to go in and they're going to build a small fire in the corner, and we're going to do smoke training, we're going to do extrication training, we're going to learn how to get in and find people in this house that's full of smoke. We're going to find, figure out, okay, where's the A, B, C side of this building? You know, all of those kind of things. And that training is invaluable. You know, we cannot possibly talk about the value of that training in live fire situations. You know, I'm not exactly sure how we got to where we are at this point. You know, I remember 10 years ago, having discussions about what the cost of trying to refurbish those buildings out there were going to be, or whether, what the cost of demolition was going to be. And that number was a lot bigger than $16,000. I do recall that. I don't remember exactly, but it was a lot more than $16,000. The bottom line here is, the amount of training that we're going to get out of this, by far exceeds $16,000, and it may cost somewhere along the way. You know, yes, someone's got to figure out who pays for it. But the bottom line is, you're not going to know what the cleanup cost is going to be until this thing is burned up and down in the ground. You know, I, we had a house burnt within a quarter of a mile from my shop a few years ago. And literally, when that thing was done, you could put it in the back of one dump truck, and you were done and out of there. You know, it was a matter of, you know, I don't think the excavator was there four hours, and it was gone, and it was all smoothed back over, and was ready to grow grass on again. You know, but you're never going to know that. I've seen other ones that the way the thing collapses, one on top of the other, they tend to lay there and smolder for days and days, and then you have a lot of mess to clean up. But the fact is, depending on how this burn happens, there may be next to no mess that has to be cleaned up. You know, and I don't know how anyone would even begin to determine a $16,000 number for a cleanup, you know, post-fire, you know? And I've also seen buildings taken down, and Brad can talk about buildings that have been taken down with excavators and dump trucks, they cost a lot more than $16,000 to get rid of them. You know, I've seen mobile homes that'll cost $20,000 to get rid of, you know, just, you know, just, you know, you run into more expense than that, just caving in a septic system and capping a well, you know, sometimes. So, I don't know where the $16,000 number came from. I can't imagine that that number's real. But, you know, I think the key point about this is the training that's available to local fire departments, whether it be Metro, City, the rural, you know, what's left of the rural division, whatever you want to talk about. The amount of training that's available from this is totally invaluable. We need to make that happen.
Well, I guess, what I've said before, we made a good faith commitment to them. They put plans, shame on us if we didn't cross all the Ts and dot all the Is, wouldn't be the first time we've done that. They've put plans in motion, they've got reservations for people coming in from all over the state. And what it is, Sonny, it's beyond just a typical burn. The focus is on arson. And Chief Parker explained to me, they, you know, they actually put certain appliances and furniture in certain rooms, and they're going to do certain things, and then, so it's a big, it's not your typical, just, let's burn the building down and get some experience. So, they've made a huge commitment, a lot of people involved in this thing. And I don't see how we can possibly say, no, hold the presses, we want to look at another angle. I don't want to eat the amount of money, but I think, shame on us, we put ourselves in this position.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize staff to notify the local fire departments to burn the building in Maple Bay, and then at the completion of that exercise, that we go out for RFPs for the cleanup of the remaining site.
Second, okay, so...
Well, there's no way you're going to know what the cleanup of the site's going to be until you burn it. You know, nobody's going to know that. But I think the value of the training, by far, exceeds the amount that the cleanup's going to cost. I want to authorize that training that's scheduled and set up, and then we'll go out for an RFP for the site cleanup.
Can I add a friendly amendment to just say, ask, somehow word in there, asking them to first see if any funding through any sources they may have is available to help cover the cost.
I'm fine with that.
Just to...
But the thing about that is, you don't know what you're asking them to pay.
No, I know, but I'm just saying...
So, let's burn it down, let's go out for an RFP, and then, once we find out that it's going to cost $15,000, $20,000 to clean up the site, go and ask Metro and City, can you contribute toward that?
Just saying, okay. They were both saying the same thing. I want them to make sure that they're still going to look for the sources.
They do the training.
I don't disagree.
And they have a training budget.
And I've been trying critically to find a way that we could do this. Real quick, Brad, before I go to you, I was thinking, if Metro would assume responsibility for cleanup, and we will contribute a set dollar amount towards that, so that if they've got guys on their crew that got a backhoe, and they want to jump in, you know, that'll be on them. Anyway, Brad?
I just wanted to make sure the motion's appropriate, because, I mean, don't we already have a direction that this thing is heading?
So, that's a point of clarification. The Parks and Rec made a decision to not provide funding, or not move forward on the request. They told us to, they told staff to get a quote from a mover to move that house. We are in the process of completing an RFP. My understanding, by the rule, is you have to have three commissioners bring that topic to this board for a change. Is that an accurate interpretation of that rule?
You're mostly right. The Parks Board did vote to dispose of it, so that issue is already done. The only question now is how to pay for it, and the Parks Board did not authorize moving forward, but they didn't vote to stop it either.
That is correct.
So if this board was to provide a funding avenue, it could move forward, technically.
Okay.
But, who's paying for it? That's the question. Can it come forward at this meeting as a motion right now? Yes, it will require, oh, what is it, two-thirds, or is it unanimous support?
No. No, it's...
Two-thirds for things not on the agenda?
Yeah, I'm sorry, it is two-thirds, yeah.
Okay. So it will require two-thirds to pass. Comments?
So, when it does get demolished, hauled away, I'm sure that that foundation doesn't need to be hauled away, that'd be just the debris in the foundation. It's a field stone foundation, came from the field, you gotta build a cave at the end, knock it down enough so that you can get topsoil over it. So, I guess, when people are quoting to get rid of the debris, we don't need to have them haul the foundation to a pit where they crush up the stones on our spats, so...
And we're returning this to a natural area. It's not like we're returning it to a site that's ready to be built on.
Yeah, right. It's green space, it's a park.
And there must be a well to be abandoned, septic system to be collapsed, and...
Do we know on those two issues?
Anecdotally, there was a site review for a Phase 1 assessment, I believe, as a part of the agreement, so...
Environmental review?
Pardon?
You're talking about environmental, or he's talking about wild and septic?
I don't know the answer to that offhand.
So, like, for asbestos in the home, has that been removed?
It has been, we're waiting on a certificate of...
Okay.
Somebody's already paid for that. I'm guessing Metro Fire.
The asbestos?
I think we did.
So...
Did we not?
I don't know the answer to that question. So, the general fund does have an appropriation to Parks, and Parks made some decisions about this parcel, and we have been moving on it. There's been activity by facilities to make this property ready. I don't know exactly where those costs are being charged. If, I'm guessing, I'm not sure.
I assume all Parks and Recreation cares about is getting rid of the house with no cost to their budget. Is that correct?
Yeah. Or at least, that we're being as wise as we can with tax dollars, yes. So there may be a cost, but first, we chose to, you know, is there a low or no-cost alternative?
I know, it's all well and good, but the ship has sailed, it's too late for them to come in at the last minute after commitments were made. And it's a shame that there wasn't communication between what one person was promising and another person was thinking. I mean, if they...
To that point, though, I think that there was a good faith effort. We were told to remove the house.
No, I'm saying, I agree with you.
All right. So, I don't know that we were perfect in going back and saying, how does that removal occur, who's paying for it? The bids aren't even closed yet for the removal of the debris. There are some issues that we have with this. But I think that once I told Joe, Parks and Recreation Department wants that house off of there, Joe took action, and the follow-up should have been a little better, but I can take responsibility for that.
Is there just a house there?
Commissioner Caffey, you want the house?
It's okay.
She wants the house.
Nope. Just a point of clarification on Mr. Wheelock's motion from Mr. Alger, is, if we were to vote for this, does this impede what you, the work that's already been being done? Are you comfortable with, I would like the motion read back, frankly, because there's been so much...
So would I.
Yeah. But what is being suggested by the Board of Commissioners, does that dovetail nicely with the work you're already doing on dealing with this, or is this going to create further confusion?
I think, from what I've heard, that this will be received fairly.
Okay. Could somebody please read me the motion?
The motion is to... The motion is to authorize staff to approve the fire and police training at the Maple Bay house. And then, once the building has been burnt, that we will solicit an RFP for the cleanup. Now, whether that cleanup is paid for through Parks and Recreation dollars, or through Board of Commissioner dollars, that discussion still has to happen. Because, you know, this is one of those things where, at least in my mind, we get into, which I hate, the fact that this board is having a discussion without the Parks and Recreation Board here. Because this truly is a decision that they were responsible for, not us. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we're even having the conversation, and I'm not totally happy about having a motion to do that, because obviously, I've been in a situation a few times before, where this board has made decisions to overrule Parks and Recreation decisions, and they never end well. At least, they never have, you know? But this is, I guess, the key piece about it, as far as I'm concerned, the willingness that I have to make the motion, is to authorize the fire department to continue their plans to have training, and police to have training on this, at this facility.
Commissioner Jewitt?
I think the training is very, very valuable, as Sonny mentioned, but I also believe, from what I'm hearing, that Parks and Rec is already on a path to complete this task of removal, whichever way they go. And I don't know that I'm comfortable stepping on their toes when they've already been on the path to complete it.
Commissioner Hundley?
They're currently seeking a quote for, or even, is there anyone willing to take this thing and move it somewhere else?
The exact motion was, to instruct staff, by the Parks Board, that passed, was to instruct staff to get an opinion from a professional company or firm that moves buildings, as to the feasibility of moving the building.
The problem is, they've already committed the building to the fire department.
Yes.
Yeah.
The Parks Board did not. Staff did that.
Right. Right. And the Parks Commission, so first, I would like to just put on the record that, like, for the Parks Commission, I totally sympathize with, as you described it, I mean, I totally empathize, because I feel that way, too. Like, if something comes to you and, like, kind of gets dropped on you, you don't know, you haven't talked about it in the last 10 months, and now there's a bill, and you're like, well, stop, stop for a second, let's look at this. So I totally do get that. As we've gone through the discussion, though, now, I definitely feel like, I kind of get it, like, how we got there, and I think, I think we're all in agreement that we don't want to stop the burn and the education that happens from that, from happening. So obviously, then, it doesn't put us in the best of negotiating positions with other people who we might want to cost-share with, like, all right, we've already said we're going to pay the bill, can you please pay some of it? I mean, I, so, that's, but I guess I'm not entirely sure what... Well, so the Parks, the Parks Commission must, if they authorize that we're getting rid of this building, did they authorize any amount of dollar to that getting, they didn't?
No.
Okay.
We can find the money in the Parks budget.
Okay.
So if it comes down to it, but I think, to Commissioner Jewitt's point, there was movement by the Parks Board to give direction to staff. Staff is doing that currently. We have verbal quotes, for lack of a better term, from several house movers that range from $35,000 to $50,000, and up to $200, if you include the lines movement and overtime. So, is it fair to say, we could request the Parks Commission have a special meeting to at least hear that information?
Because I would also throw out there, in order for that to work as a better solution than burning it down, we not only have to know how much it would cost, but there has to be someone who's willing to pay that. And that's outside of the quote, right? The quote is just, this is what it's going to cost now, you know, and the time to find anybody to do that.
Well, there's, at times, a lot of people out there, they'll take a free house and pay the expense of moving it. I mean, it'd be their expense.
Right.
Okay. I understand all this. But whether it's someone from the Parks and Recreation, or this board, or someone from facilities, it's one county, we spoke to this client, and we said, go ahead, they made appropriate plans, made commitments, spent money, and we can't, in my clear conscience, go, whoops, we screwed up, you're screwed, and we're going to go another direction. And see, if possible, we don't even know, if possible, if someone would be interested after coming in to take a look at that thing, wants to move it at their cost. We won't know that way beyond until after, the dates come and go on, their whole program's gone up in smoke. Kind of fitting.
For lack of a better... So if I'm fire chief, and I'm arranging a controlled burn, do I have any responsibility to make sure that the person understands the liability of removing the debris afterwards? Are you, I mean, are you saying they have no accountability at all? It's all ours?
Unless there was a discussion, hey, do you want to burn this house down? Fine. What's the date? What are you going to do? And whatever, whatever. I mean, if there was no discussion and commitment on their part, if they were asked and they refused, I don't think that was the case. It probably was just, not, my guess, not ever discussed.
Okay. It's likely. And the other, the other point I'll make is, we've gotten two emails from people in the fire service telling us details about the training, and we've heard how valuable it is. Well, if it's valuable, commit to cleaning up the mess afterwards. Is it not that valuable, that you would commit to cleaning it up?
That would have been an important question to ask upfront before we made the agreement, though, which I feel, right? That should have been agreed to upfront, and it hasn't been. Right? That would have been...
I think those are all fair points. I think there was an assumption that there was an allocation from the Parks and Rec Department to pay for the removal of the house. You don't move a house at no cost, unless, this option, which we did not consider, we did not consider going out and asking the public for this. I think that the Parks and Rec Department, they made a decision, they were not opposed to burning the house, they just wanted information about that. If we could have a special meeting to give them the information, that can happen at, within 72 hours, if I'm not mistaken, we can give them the information, and tell them, we feel that the board is committed to moving forward, and that they would like us to do this, and see what they say.
It was a four to three vote, I understand?
It was.
And I'll talk to one of the people, whom I know.
I'm comfortable either way. I am. I just, I know there's, it would be a bad situation to walk away from the discussion we've had with the fire services. It would be, it would... It would be a very unfortunate thing. We don't want to do it. We can, I think it would be an improper decision.
Well, I agree that I want to see their training move forward. The concern is, who's paying the bill? They have their own budgets. They're funded through townships. I mean, they have their funding. Why are we funding this?
What I've asked them, and I started at the onset, saying, let's split it. We all screwed up on this thing.
I'm fine with that.
Traverse City, you try to kick in a third. Metro, a third. The county needs a third. And we're getting a good deal. The county is known for 15 years, they had to move the house. Or get rid of the house, I should say. And...
So, I would be comfortable with that. I'm not comfortable with just saying, we're not going to deal with it later. Well, you know, we have no idea who's going to pay for it. It'll probably be us. That, I appreciate the effort, but I'm not comfortable with committing public tax dollars from the county coffers in that manner.
I guess the point is, Parks and Recreation is responsible to get that house off that property. They've already entered into discussions for the fire department to burn it. If the house gets burnt, Parks and Recreation is responsible for whatever's left. Now, it may not be an issue. I'm telling you that. I've seen these things burn up, and there's truly nothing, basically, to move. You know? There's nothing there. And if, in fact, all it ends up with is a foundation that's got some ashes in it, and there's not anything else there, you just push it over and you're done with it. Or, because of the fact it's just recreation area, as long as it's not a basement that's a hazard, you leave it alone.
You got a tractor?
Can I call a question?
Sure. I mean, you actually moved to call a question? Or you just want to ask us to vote?
Moving to call the question.
Okay, because then we have to take a vote on whether we're going to vote.
Unless we're just ready to vote, either way.
Okay, let's vote.
All right, we need to clarify this motion, because it kind of morphed a few times. At first, it was notify fire department to burn the building at Maple Bay, and then go out for RFP for cleanup. Then, it kind of changed to authorize staff to approve the fire police training at the house. And then, Chairman Henshaw said it was something else that I didn't even catch about, authorize study or something on what we could do with it. So, I need to know exactly what the motion is.
I was referring to what the motion was on the Parks Board.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, is it the notify fire department to burn the building?
The fire police, whatever they, if they're going, because I understand that it's more of a training than just fire. But the fact is, emergency services is going to utilize the facility and burn the building.
And they will make a best effort to cover a third of the cost to remediate the property.
So, you're adding that in there, then?
I'm just saying, well, I'll make a friendly amendment to that, then.
You know, if you can add this, you know, I hate to speak for them, so I don't want to do that. And I believe Parks and Recreation is on the hook for the cleanup when it's done. I truly do. I don't, you know, sure, it'd be nice if the fire department contributed something, and we can ask, but the fact is, it's a Parks and Recreation responsibility.
What's the motion?
Well, Sonny, the thing is, I talked to Pat Parker, and he said there's, they'll look. So, I just, to throw it in and not say it's a caveat if they can't, but just, they will make a best effort.
Move to clear the floor.
No, just tell me what the motion is, if you vote.
How about this?
It's Sonny's motion. It's up to the chair to repeat the motion, so help me out.
Somebody's...
You know, as far as I'm concerned, the motion is to allow emergency services to utilize the facility at Maple Bay for police and fire training, and burn it down at their scheduled date in September. What we have left, we'll deal with when we have it left.
Okay, so, does your motion include going out for an RFP, or is that just...
No, let's just authorize them to burn it down. Then, we'll deal with whatever we have left.
I'll second.
Are you okay?
Okay. So, moved by Wheelack, supported by La Pointe, to authorize the fire services...
But I'd like to make a friendly amendment.
Okay.
The amendment, take what he says and just add to it. And Metro Fire and Traverse City Fire will make a best effort to help defray the cost that will be borne by the county.
Is that friendly?
No.
Okay. So, do we have a second on that motion?
Yes, I do. I'm not going to vote for it.
Are we including that friendly amendment or not? No.
No.
Okay.
It was not friendly. So, you would have to make a motion and vote on it, and then it would get really complicated.
No. Let's just vote on the motion, authorize them to get rid of the building.
Okay. Without any regard for who's paying for what? The motion is just to authorize them to move forward with the training and the burning. Roll call vote, please.
Wheelack?
Yes.
La Pointe?
No.
Jewitt?
Yes.
Hundley?
Yes.
Kofia?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Henshaw?
No.
Motion passed.
All right. Any other commissioner reports? Let's talk about the airport.
I've got an hour long here.
All right. Yeah, just very quickly, I was able to attend the...
Oh, I'm sorry. That required a two-thirds to pass.
And it was.
Was it two-thirds?
Five to two.
I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt.
No, that's fine. Just that I attended Traverse City's, Traverse City Commission's meeting last month. I cannot talk today. Peninsula Township, I was not able to, because they canceled their second meet of the month. I continue to attend the airport Governance Ad-Hoc Committee meetings as a private citizen, and I am a part of the Ethics Ad-Hoc. We are not meeting this month, because our civil council is out having a baby, I think, today. And then, the only other thing I wanted to share, last month, we let the public know that our Attorney General was doing the Elder Abuse Task Force and having a meeting locally, which I understood was very well-attended. Next month, in August, our new governor has called a Joint Task Force on Jail and Pre-Trial Incarceration, and they are doing town halls, listening sessions, stakeholder round tables around the state. There is one scheduled in Traverse City, which I intend to attend, and hopefully, many of our commissioners can attend. It is Friday, August 23rd, and the location is to be determined, so I would check the governor's website under Task Force for Jail and Pre-Trial Incarceration. But this meeting will consist of a meeting of the task force from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., which is open to the public, and then, public testimony on the topic at hand from 1:30 to 4:00. So, just as a public service announcement, that's all I have.
Any other commissioner reports? All right. Any staff department reports? Anything to cover?
All right. Still doing marriage licenses? All right, good. Notice is, July 24th, we have a study session with the airport. That'll be right here, one week from today, at 8:00 a.m. And we're going to be talking about the airport's obstacle avoidance plan.
Is it just that, Mr. Chairman, or are we having the other? There was another matter that was maybe going to be part of the sub-study session? What has happened with that?
The DDA is not ready to proceed with that.
So, just the airport? Okay, great, thank you. Go ahead.
We will be holding interviews for an appointment to the Construction Code Board of Appeals at 7:15 that morning, prior to the 8 o'clock study session.
Actually, no. I'm sorry, I thought you got the message.
The email I got yesterday says it is.
So, I was actually up in admin yesterday. Chris Kramer says, oh, wait, this is a chairman appointment. So, okay, we don't need to have a meeting, the chairman, just interview him, and the board approves it, so.
Works for me.
If that's all right with you guys, I mean, if you really want to sit through another meeting, it's fine, but...
No, I just was trying to put it in my calendar.